Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the planning commission meeting at slide number seven. We'll start on the meeting.
Chair Caster. Commissioner Moran. Here.
Here.
Commissioner Yu.
Here.
Chair, we have a call on tonight.
We're going to approve all of your agenda. I would to. Prove your agenda as is. Second.
Second.
And so. Secondly, the David's.
Hi.
Come this way. Uh, approval of the minutes. I guess we start with August third. But yeah. The missions.
I agree uh. To prove the minutes of August third, twenty twenty three as.
But yeah. Didn't remember if I was there. It was a second one that I was.
No. I did not think.
On this third of. I was absent, so. I don't know who you approve. So.
We'll have to approve at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll do that in the next meeting. Okay, so let's start after seventeen, that meeting I wasn't at. Right, and actually think that we're the same bottom.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. We will leave on and save that for the next meeting. Council liaison report. Don't you leave? No. Anything? No. Okay. Alright, now, community input. At this time, this is the final day that you can come up and speak on something not on tonight's agenda. You have a fairly light cloud, so I'll be a little, I'll give you a little latitude, seeing if anyone speaks anything. Not upon the agenda tonight, maybe you'll need your comments to part of it. Seeing the limits, plus everyone's here for the assembly agendas, we'll move to any first item from the. Public hearing, about six oh five Baldwin Court. So, who's going to do the presentation?
Planner will.
I will.
Give you the word.
Thank you, Chair.
One moment. One moment, I'm sorry. Take your time. Get now, would you? Alright.
May the commission will be reviewing the continued item for Stonegate Lot Two at six oh five Baldwin Court. This item was continued from the August third, twenty twenty three. Planning Commission meeting to address the following points. Uh, response to Stonegate Design Guideline D two point three to avoid the garage being the dominant architectural feature by pushing it further back. Respond to Stonegate Design Guideline D eight twenty two to revise the front porch to be better integrated with the design of the structure by revising the column design. And finally, to respond to the Design uh Guideline G two point one to demonstrate the site retaining walls. Blending with the natural contours and transitioning with the existing landmarks. The applicant is requesting by revisal, the construction of the new four thousand two hundred twenty one square foot. Single-family residence, including an attached two-car garage on an existing flat building pad. Pursuant to your modern municipal code, section seventeen point five two point zero seven zero subsection C two. Construction of the single-family dwelling unit in the hillside management zone required the approval of a hillside development permit. And pursuant to the condition of approval for the tract map. So I stated there to any development which can be seen from the location of the lumber cabin. Harder Barn or Willis Estate, which are all on lots twenty and eighteen. The subject to uh. Review of conditional use permit to ensure that it will in contrast with the design of these cultural resources. And to protect these cultural resources by distinguishing them from their non-historic context. So in the revised summary data of development standards, the project remains compliant with both the development standards of hillside management zone as well as the exceptions provided in the. Settlement agreement. Notably. The lot coverage is reduced from its original proposal by three hundred four square feet. And the gross floor area is reduced from its original proposal by one hundred A B square feet. It's also resulted in a ending increase of the front yard setback from twenty five to twenty eight feet. And the revival also includes uh reprogramming of the space. To reduce the parking from three to two covered square parking spaces. We'll go over that in the following slides. So as stated before, this is a new single-family residence. With an attached two-car garage of four thousand two hundred twenty one square feet, formerly four thousand four hundred nine square feet. It is construction located on an existing flat building pad. It remains to be a craftsman style architecture with low pitched cable roofs. And materials incorporating natural occurring materials. Exposed natural elements and emphasizing the materials. Lot two is located at the southwest corner of Baldwin Court in the Daniel Terrace. It takes access from Baldwin Court. Uh. And has significant street crunchage along the Daniel terrace. Other lots on screen outlined in red are currently under review pending the planning commission hearings. Uh, these are outlined in blues, lots one, twenty three, and twenty six. Uh, that have approved entitlements. Lot nine is pending a building application review. Lot seven, five, and twenty five currently have a building permit issued in our end of contract. And finally, lots twenty one, twenty two, and twenty four have completed construction. Also depicted on the screen is lots three, eight, ten, and lot twenty, which is the Willis Estate. The original proposal from August third. Site plan is shown on screen, which included the uh proposal of a three-car garage. Uh, which is a two-car garage attached to a single-car garage. And that two-car garage is pretty far forward on the lot. At the front near Baldwin Court, it leaves an open atrium behind it. And the revision. Pushes that garage back in response to the commission's comments to further inconsistency with Design Guideline B two point three. This results in a disconnect between the two-car garage and the single-car garage. And the floor plan was reprogrammed to create additional residential space where the single-car garage was. A byproduct of this change reduces the width of the driveway and expands the front porch to span the full width of the. Front projecting portion of the building. And on screen for side-by-side comparison is the original proposal from August third on the left. And the current revised proposal on the right. And as you can see. The garage moved about sixteen feet backward. And the central space was reprogrammed from garage space to office. And a relocation for the powder room and laundry room. The total residential area of the first floor is now two thousand three hundred eighteen square feet. The residential area is up from its original proposal of two thousand two hundred eight square feet. With the garage now four thirty-six square feet down from five ninety-six square feet. And here is the original plan presented on August third. This is enlarged. And by comparison with its original, I'm sorry, with its revision. Is the plan presented before you today for consideration. And as you can see. The two-car garage is pushed all the way back. The library was eliminated, the relocation of the powder room and laundry room. As well as an office that takes place of a single-car garage. The massing at the second floor has changed in its entirety in response to the changes at the ground floor. Programming has essentially been mirrored so that the primary bedroom is now in the west half of the bedroom. Uh, of the space, and bedrooms two and three are now on the east half. The balcony is retained, and now feature is a feature of the primary bedroom. The den has been eliminated entirely, and the laundry room has been relocated to the ground floor. In terms of massing. Walls facing the front have been pulled back in varying degrees. The most obvious being the walls above the garage. More subtly, the walls above the porch have been pulled back. Uh, roughly two feet, giving more emphasis to the single-story elements below. The second floor massing at the rear has been slightly widened to accommodate that reprogram. On this slide is an enlarged uh original proposal from August third. Here are the setbacks that we reviewed last time. On the following slide is the revised proposal for you tonight for consideration. Step backs shown here. Uh, in darker blue, the seven foot six, three foot six, and four foot nine are continued uh are maintained step backs. But as you can see, the four foot nine. Along the northwest side here. Uh, it is in line with the site on the east. Has been pushed back to thirteen foot three on the front. And additional stepping back on other elevations. The revision to push the garage back. Uh, is designed with a hit roof cover met with the original rear-facing gable roof. And maintaining and joining with the front-facing gable. Roof of the second story is completely redesigned from the, from a combination gable and hip roof to one entirely of front-to-back gables. The primary and highest bridge is. Uh, sorry. Centered to the mass of the second floor, the secondary lower ridge is cascading from it. And here's an enlarged uh original proposal from August third. You can see uh this is primarily. Uh, hip roof on the second floor. And the revisions changed that all into cleaner lines with ridges at the center. Secondary ridges cascading from that, but front-to-back gables. Revised north elevation sees changes mostly at the second floor due to its redesign, which is more evenly penetrated. Revised south elevation sees both. Relocation of the garage. And the redesign uh of the second floor. Roof of the garage has been changed from a side table to a hip roof. The garage relocation reveals more of the residential area where the office will have primary visibility toward the driveway, street, and valley beyond. Revisions at the east and west elevation sees changes mainly at the roof design with changes from hip roof to gable roof. Redesigned, uh, the redesign of the second floor is more evenly penetrated and balanced. The front porch now fully spans the front projecting portion of the home with four double posts on Pierce ports. The double posts have been subtly enlarged to reflect the scale of the supported header. Uh, and again, here are the proposed materials which have not changed. The applicant has provided additional information on the data point review as a pass around. And. Vice Chair Pezner, uh, we have a sample material board with some color chips. Let's go ahead. For the roof material color and siding material color remain the same, the color tips are provided for you. Uh, there was clarification requested to the color of the window and door frame, which is a Dunn Edwards Golden Oak that you will see in that material sample board. Uh, its accurate color has been difficult to produce on print and on screen, uh, so the sample is there for your reference. For three D renderings on this slide, we have the original proposal on the left. And revised proposal on the right, and you can see the dramatic change in massing as the garage has been pulled back with the second story to follow it. Can also see uh an improvement to the front porch design that removes the railing, the unnecessary uh pilaster between two of the columns. And that's to fully span the whole front port, uh, whole front base of the building. Enassing with context to its surroundings, the original proposal is shown on screen right now with its neighboring property of Lot One. Which is, as shown on screen, a uh prior version of that lot. And on the next slide here is the revised massing for Lot Two along with uh what was approved for Lot One to its left. So for findings for approval for the hillside development permit. It is found that it is consistent with the general plan for single-family residential use. It meets all zoning regulations, including height, setback, and parking. The new construction is on an existing flat building pad. The project does not impact original views. The development will comply with the fuel modification plan. It uses earth tone color palette. Per condition use permit findings. The new house is differentiated from the historic structures. Again, the lumber cabin and Harder Barn, as well as the Willis Estate. And that is a contemporary craftsman style that is differentiated from the uh traditional prairie farmhouse style. Baldwin Court provides sufficient access and circulation for the single-family development. And its use is consistent with other single-family development in its vicinity. A lot was created for the development of a single-family residence. The project meets all requirements of the zoning code as stated before. The project. Also maintains consistency with the Stonegate Design Guidelines as a custom architectural design that responds to the site conditions. Mass and bulk are reduced with bricks and wall clean, new variations, architectural projections, and open patio. A variety of window sizes and configurations are included to enhance its visual interest. The materials are durable and low maintenance. Metal roofs and fibers in the border are included for that purpose. And the landscape plan is a water-efficient. Uh, and is integral component of the project design. The alternatives before the planning commission tonight are to, one, approve the application for hillside development permit fifteen oh three. And conditional use permit fifteen oh three. Subject to the conditions of approval as stated in uh planning commission resolution twenty-three X twelve. Planning Commission, secondly, may approve the application of modifications. Third, may deny the request identifying the findings that the planning commission feels cannot be made in the basis for rejecting those findings. Or fourth, continue the subject project and provide corrections to the applicant and staff. That is recommending that the planning commission approve the application, subject to the conditions of approval outlined in planning commission resolution twenty-three dash twelve. That concludes my presentation. There is additional material that the applicant would like to present. Uh, unless you have questions for me ahead of that.
If anyone have questions. With the presentations.
Go off the sideline.
Your first. Any thoughts?
Um.
We're not discussing just the end of the job.
Yeah, no, that was.
Okay. Where, where's the, oh, there is. Come on.
Hi.
Good evening, uh, Chair and all the commissioners. Uh, my name is Stephen Chen. I'm here to send the uh the project that's in front of you. I'm going to show you the three D view to kind of enhance what uh. Planner was saying uh to give you a better picture of what the changes and how it looks like to the contact.
So this is the lot two that uh we advised per uh the last time comment regarding pushing back the. The garage and also the massing uh for the upper roof. Uh, this is the end result for that, and it comes with a longer driveway for us, but the uh the outcome is good. To having the uh the curb side appealing uh more satisfied to have the main architectural dominant uh feature is the uh the front porch and the main house of the the feature. And the two-car garage, well, coming from three car to two car right now, so it won't be become a main feature uh to the house compared to the previous version. Uh, also. Uh, on the side of the wall that we have been probably, let's see it closely. Let me show you another model. This model is a clean model that doesn't have a tree, so it's better demonstrate um. The retaining wall along the side to contour with the the curve or the contour line. So it's hidden in the back and also followed in the back. So that was main. Common last time, and also the column. Uh, above the pillar is getting upsized to have a more substantial architectural uh column size compared to before. I believe last time was like a four by four, five by five, that kind of thing. Right now it's eight by eight, so it's much substantial. Uh, to complement the uh the bigger uh entry porch roof and element over there. So, let me hold it to the overall. So again, coming back to the architectural design, uh, we are slowly, slowly transition, the transitional uh craftsman house. To a little bit modernish uh towards to the upper hill. Uh, that's why you can see the material change a little bit here and there from uh the single roof to metal roof. And more um. Contemporary-ish, cleaner uh architectural style. And try to not to share too many similar uh features between the two buildings, differentiate the two houses in uh. Not just the style, but also the transition of the timing too. So uh, that is pretty much what I have. Uh, if you have any questions, please feel free to let me. Any questions?
Hey, I do. So, so the top of the wall, is it, is it gonna, I just want to make, because sometimes the pictures are a little bit different than when what actually happens. Um, is it gonna be stepped like?
No, it's not gonna be.
It's not gonna stop like a brick.
No, yeah, we're gonna do that because we get the version of that. It looks horrible.
It will get, that's my concern.
So we follow the council as much as we can. Uh, of course, during the the grading, uh, they will build the CMU wall first. But in between the jogging, they can even fill with concrete or other materials to 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 taper uh between the two bricks or two blocks and to make a transition, a smooth transition.
Okay, and my other question, just from that picture, it's um, you said it's gonna be a stone, is it like a granite? That looks like that other kind of like, you know, limestone.
That's the same material that we're using for the river rock throughout the whole.
So it's all gonna be river rock style, right? That was in the.
Right, for the first two houses, Lot One and Lot Two, the same thing for the river rock and to a three uh the upper hill that will change a little bit. To fit into the architectural style, but this one is a river rock uh paper, or kind of uh vineyard, but it yes, yeah.
Right. And you mentioned that roof has changed from the standing scene.
No, it's always the same, same for this one all the time. Uh, like I say, we are trying to transition in uh more uh cleaner, modern, or contemporary-ish, even though it's still a. Um, craftsman style, but we try to get a little bit uh hints of the modernish elements.
So the orange color you're showing us the.
That's the, the, the wood, right, exactly. It it shows pretty orange here because the sliding condition, yeah, if I change the sunlight, it will change a little bit again there, but.
All the wood elements are basically supposed to be that color.
Majority of the wood element will be that color. Uh, I believe of the uh these here, the the panel behind, we try to make it a little bit darker. I think that we're using different way to contrast the, the element of the uh. Uh, structural elements.
So for clarification too, on the rendering for the one that you had before, you were showing the stone as river rock stone. Because here you're showing a brick.
Oh.
A little bit older.
Sorry. Oh, maybe I make them to stay on that one. Maybe I too confused with a lot of ones. Sorry.
We just want to.
Yeah, yeah, if it shows on the joint, that will be, that will be the very, I apologize that that too many projects with this. Yeah, that would be the, if that's okay, that would be the, the, the break the mirror that we're showing.
Do you know what the overhang is on the roof right now?
Right now, it's to be twenty-four inches projecting out, just like that Lot One, same width.
I, I like the shadow.
Right, this is the morning light coming from the east side, and that's what you're getting every morning, well, most of the morning during the the summer or the spring time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Actually, one last question, sorry.
Yes.
What's the height of the retaining wall as it goes to the, the back and in charge of part of?
Uh, you mean the back courtyard? That we, uh, I remember uh for recovery department, we cannot see the six feet in high, but we can do it two tier. So I remember a lot, the, the first year will be about three feet, and then the second year is less than six feet, so we have a tier. I mean, look at that, give that model.
Yeah, that's kind of true of that one.
Yeah, because this one is planned. And then, so I believe this one, this one should be within six feet and then a tier two, maybe this model is the, on that one. But on our section joint, we do show that two tier uh less than six feet for each tier, uh lower and the higher tier for that. And in between, we have the brace pointer, so. Upper tier will be covered by uh landscape element will have a bit at least, so it won't seem like too tall uh right in front of you in the backyard.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this time all okay, no, any comments or questions on the, our comments and questions. From the, the audience, anybody wants to speak on this project? You're free to do so. I'm up to uh. This is why I do the performance. Anyone on this project? Make time to define. This is our revised project program. You don't have to look at it, right? I guess I'll start with you go back, buddy.
Yeah.
I will, I'll say. Um. Thank you for the presentation. I think it very clearly made out so we could see kind of where, where we started with and where we ended up with. And I think the. The sessions were adjustments that were made to the plan and to the ownership. And to the site, we have a lot of sense. Stepping back on the garage, uh. Because I think easily this thing could have, garage could have on the other side of the corner, and I think then. Very prominent thing, and so appreciate the fact that they were to tuck it in, um. Using this for footage on the upper level was actually, I could do this well with the stepping and the massing of it, but it's a much, I know, we've tried as well, so appreciate that. Uh, materials, supplies, and color. It's a little dark for my taste, but I think it's nice. I think you did a good job with that, um, but, um. I think. It's well done, and I think it's a player.
Um, yeah, I, I think you took, you, you answered the, 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 the question to the, the concerns that we had last time, you know, um, especially with the wall, especially with the garage. Um. I, I think it looks a thousand percent better. Um, with the two-car garage stepped back, it's not confusing where we have one. You know, car garage kind of blending into the porch and, and everything, um. And the roof lines are, are cleaned up. I like it actually a lot better, um, even though it may be less craftsman-esque. Um, I think you did a great job doing it, but it still retains some of that. Um, at least character. Um, and I see, you know, you're trying to do that with, with the colors. Um, I have to say, I, I had a, a small craftsman. Um. Cabin, I would call it, in the, in the Silverwater Canyon, that was painted the same color. So I, I can't say that's um out of line with, with that type of house or, or character, um. I, I have nothing. No more, uh, e- everything's been answered for me, so maybe.
Um, yeah, I haven't been tracking in detail. I was out for um some bereavement, and then prior to that, I hadn't yet started the reasons for the requested modifications, but I am also of the opinion that they are. A great improvement to the, the house, so whether it was aesthetic or code, um, I think particularly the garage, um. I would imagine a, a family would appreciate the modifications that you have done, uh, not only the community around you, um, so in my opinion, it's. Better, and I appreciated the clear differentiation between before and after in the presentation. It's not like the check-in, it's like a, a, for the initial for us, so thank you. And something further.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pushing a bit better. I know one of the basketball board in the backyard, I don't think that will be practical enough. They sacrificed their garage and pissed the front uh gables and the posts, so, and I like the design, the double posts, right, the boards are showing. The poster, that was a great design, you know, guarantee. Yeah, um, so I can make the plan. Have a motion.
Uh, make a motion to approve. Uh, hillside development permit fifteen oh three, additional use permit fifteen oh three, uh, as presented this evening.
Awesome, yeah. Second?
Awesome, yeah, second?
It was a favor. I, I, both. As you know, Mr. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Good night, sir.
Yeah. Well, I don't think. Okay, very good. We'll go on for a second, I am on the uh planning agenda, the five, I think, five hour right now, there is, not using finger. And I'm patient for uh the mission, this is construction, construction. I'm not having a pretty.
So the planning commission will be considering a design review permit twenty-two oh eight for the property at five ninety-five Auburn Avenue. To allow the construction. Of three thousand nine hundred thirty-one square foot, two-story grade, single-family residence, including a attached garage. Pursuant to the municipal code, any second-story addition. Or any construction resulting in gross area of thirty-five hundred square feet or greater shall be subject to. A design review permit. This project also qualifies for a categorical exemption as it involved a demolition and construction of a small structure. The subject property is located on the private street Auburn Avenue. Um an extension from the public street Auburn Avenue towards the north, um right above the Elm Avenue. So it is located within the R one residential zone, and the property is built in nineteen fifty-five. The lot is fourteen thousand seven hundred sixty-two square feet. And um you can see that the lot is wider than it's deep. The property are surrounded by a mixture of one-story and two-story single-family residence. And it takes access from the private parcel, which is the private Auburn Avenue. That is owned by six oh two Auburn Avenue. Here are some side photographs provided by the applicant, the top row is taken from the private road. Um looking towards the structure, the scene structure, and the bottom row is. Um on the driveway, looking back, the side loaded two-car garage. We saw the side photos taking within the the current side yard. Um looking north towards the structure and looking south towards the south property line. The photographs of the neighborhood um taking from the private street. And this is the topographic and existing site plan for the pro- property, and you can see that the existing footprint. Of the structure is perpendicular to the Auburn Avenue. And also it identifies the four protected oak trees, three of them are on site bordering the north property line. And one oak tree is at the neighbor property. So a comprehensive um harbor street for has been prepared to evaluate the health and the condition of the existing trees. Um it is the obvious opinion that those oak tree can be conserved and be protected in place during the construction. And um survives of a proposed project. This is the proposed site plan, um the existing outline of the structure are dashed, and the solid line is the proposed footprint. And you can see that the proposed project will be reoriented towards um the street, so it'll be parallel to the Auburn Avenue. Providing a street frontage. Um they will retain the existing driveway, um but the. Existing asphalt will be demolished and replaced with um permeable papers. On the site plan, you can see that the proposed footprint are relative in the same proximity of the existing footprint. And it is set back from the south probably by of fifty-four feet seven inches away. And from forty-nine feet from the north property line. This is the landscape proposed by the architect. Um it features a um olive tree and um preserve the existing oak tree to the north. It also incorporate the native plant and also. A low-impact development to collect all the storm water runoff on site. By installing a per- perimeter uh perforated pipe. And collect them towards the bio-retention basin at the lowest point where it's at the southeast corner. So the applicant also provided a neighborhood analysis that um sampled the property within the three hundred square radius. So twenty-eight property were sampled, um excluding the vacant land. You can see that the proposed project at three thousand four hundred ninety-seven square feet is below the. Average of the top one-third within the neighborhood. The proposed project is a fully co-compliant project as it provides um twenty-one percent of the lot coverage. Building height, it's at twenty-two feet eleven inches, the gross floor area is at three thousand nine hundred thirty-one. And it also provided all the setback requirement um. And a two-car attached parking garage. This is the proposed floor plan for the first floor, um it emphasized the central. Axie where you entered to the living room and dining room. It has two wings, one to the north, one to the south, the south wing compressive. A family room, kitchen, a pantry, laundry and powder room, and the north side. Um it has a guest suite and the side-loaded two-car garage. It also have two sets of garage, sorry, two sets of stairs leading to the second floor, one is from the central, and then the other one is from the family room. So from the center of the um residence, you lead up to the second floor, um it provides three bedroom suites. And the other set of stairs from the family room leads up to a outdoor um patio deck. The applicant provided a diagram, diagram that further demonstrates the indoor/outdoor space and also the double-height area. Um and a catwalk connecting the second floor, the north side and the south side. Here's the section of the proposed project, the upper one cuts across um the garage, kitchen, and the dining room area. And the lower sections that you can see the catwalk in between and the double-height um dining area and the front porch. Applicant also provided a size section to further demonstrate the use of the existing pad, so. Um the ma- majority of the proposed project as it's on. On the relatively flat area, and from that building pad, um. The north property boundary are about eight feet higher than the property um. The building path and towards the south, you're about um ten feet higher than the south boundary. On the top is the east elevation, which is the street fronting elevation. And it demonstrated a modern farmhouse style, which includes the standing seam metal roof. And a hobby board siding. It also provides a full-width um front porch side to side. And on the bottom, you can see the side-loaded garage. And. The characteristic of the modern farmhouse style are carried throughout the four elevations. Here are the materials proposed for the project, and they will use a dark brown standing seam metal roof, party plank side. Um siding in the smooth farmhouse white color, dark ones, aluminum plaid windows. And permeable papers. For the driveway. The architect provided um really rendering of the proposed project, then also a photo montage. Of the proposed project within the context, so you can see that um. There is a great difference, and it is the client's desire to um have a level side yard. And it is decorated, the great difference is decorated by the purple lot and also the. One one that seat wall. To further soften the great difference. Here you can see the photo montage of. The rendering from the southeast corner on on the Auburn Avenue. So design review findings have to be made in order for the commission to approve the project. Um here is the summary of the finding that staff was able to make. That the proposed project is consistent with the general plan and the zoning code, the project. Remain as single-family use. And also the heights, whole scale and mass and signing of the proposed project are compatible with the existing neighborhood. The project reflects the scale of the neighborhood, and it's not L proportion as if opposed to modern farmhouse architectural style. Which is consistent with the foothill village setting. The project does not interfere with the public view. As it sits on the existing building pad and retain all the mature foliage on site. The project exhibited coherent project-wide design as it um carries the characteristic of the modern farmhouse throughout all sites of the structure. Um we far less than entire property is not publicly usable. The project is not requesting any relief from development standard. And the custom design of the project is a thoughtful architectural with the material and color contribute to the character of the modern farmhouse. Um it preserved existing. Oak trees and retaining total of seventeen existing trees on site. The siding of the structure is in keeping of the landform, particularly it. Sits on the existing building pad and reoriented towards the street to provide a street frontage. The project proposed high-quality material and is compatible throughout the design, and it meets all code requirements. Of course, the project will be subject to the California zoning code, and also the Sierra water flow impact development and the water efficient landscape. The planning commission this evening may approve the project. Approve the project with qualification or deny the project identifying the findings of the planning commission feels cannot be made. And the basis rejecting those findings or continuing the project and provide directions to the applicant and staff. Staff is recommending that the plan of commission approve the application for the survey view twenty-two oh eight pursuant to the resolution twenty-three dash fourteen. And that concludes my presentation, we did receive one public comment and those um were forwarded to the commission. And at this time, if you have any questions for staff, or um I can introduce uh doll architects and the property owner. To the podium.
Um yes, I noticed that there in the drawings a proposed pool, and I was just curious whether that was. Part of this proposal that we're approving, I didn't see it in any of the renderings.
Right, so um at the very beginning, the um architect proposed a pool, but they eliminated the only um proposed that was. Um the uh the leftover was from uh was on the civil drawings.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Then we remove that, so there is no pool at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Can you pull up the floor plans, I don't make it seem like a pathway.
Alright, I I didn't know very good was.
This is a.
Yeah, it's only a diagram, I didn't see the. I didn't see it, I'm. About that.
I felt.
That's the whole piece. Look. Thirty percent.
Yeah, the floor plan of those.
I feel like it's on the drop box. The floor plans are provided separately on the drop box ledge.
Oh, it's a lot, I gotta make it work. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I I do have it.
Oh, no, I have that.
But it's a separate.
It's always. Question. Uh, is there architect?
Yes.
Oh.
Architect is here.
I think I must say my question. Yeah, do they have a, is there a presentation, or somebody wants to say something about this? Sure, why don't you come up with anything? Is that a?
Yeah, yeah, uh you can say, you're asking the questions, yeah.
Yeah, but you can prove.
Good evening, we're Doll Architects. Oh, the mouse. Technology. So I'm Steve Doll, this is my son Adrian Doll, it's a family thing, uh first started by my grandparents, so. We we love helping homeowners, and it's kind of fun going second in the evening and and watching the hearing before, I'm going. Yeah, this is great, we we have the the hidden garage round to the side, we have a front porch that goes all the way across the front. We have eight-inch heavy-duty columns out in front, we have a a home for a family that's here, the Reebly family, that's in row two, so this is not a spec home. I've been working with Steve, so Steve, working with Steve for over thirty years, every project we've worked on, they retain and hold with the family. And it passes on to generations, so this is a family home, this isn't a spec home, so the designs you see up here are for the family. But I wanted to let you guys know, for years I was on the planning commission where I live in South Pasadena, my wife was a city planner for thirty years in Pasadena. So I wanted to let you know and thank Claire and and Josh and Vincent and the rest, you have a a good staff, it's tough. For thirty years in Pasadena, so I wanted to let you know and thank Claire and and Josh and Vincent and the rest, you have a a good staff, it's tough love. Uh what you're seeing tonight is not what we initially turned in, they already beat us up professionally and and we have a better project tonight. Because of the crew you have that kind of uh you know refined it, so the the meeting you had on the the previous hearing. The the change, we already did that with them, which is great. There's the rendering, so Adrian did all these drawings. It it really is different these days, I'm I'm older, I'm a pencil kind of guy, when you do the three D. I it it really helps working with the homeowner, the the kids can visualize it, okay, that's my bedroom and that's where everything is. It it makes for a better design project where you can really see and visualize, there's aren't surprises. And when this is built, I think it'll feel like it's always been there on the property. It it actually goes a lot better and thanks Claire for showing the the existing footprint and then this. This goes proportionally with the site with a good setback, right now the the house is kind of fighting. The site is too close to the front, it's too close to the back. Um initially, I mean, we studied all sorts of things, putting the driveway at the bottom. And ultimately, as Claire shared, we're gonna keep the driveway at the north exactly where it is. The other neat thing and and growing up in in Southern California, I'm used to that, the the tree rows. There's eucalyptus, there's pine, there's oak trees along there, we're not gonna touch one of those trees to the north. There's a very large home to the north and and we want privacy and they want privacy and so that's great to stay right there. Um these are pretty true to life um uh visions of the trees in the renderings. Adrian uses Photoshop and 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 looks at, but you can't use Google Street View because it's a private street, but you can go on. Bing and get the heights and so there's the massing. So the other thing I wanted to react to besides the hearing before us tonight was the one email that you did get from a neighbor to the south. And so this is looking at the south towards the north, when you see the home uh right now, the home that's on the site is a two story home. On the north, you enter on the ground level and then you by the time you're you're out on the south of that home, you're a full story up in the air. So we're doing the same thing, we're gonna enter at the ground level and and we're gonna go up. We we wanna try and preserve as much yard as possible for nature, for the kids to play in and the play area down below and. And uh for Commissioner Moren, the 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 play area down there below, we did initially uh present to to show a pool there. We didn't wanna go to the trouble of having the civil engineer change all their drawings. We may or may not do a pool in the future, it's just a separate permit at a staff level, so we're not really including that as part of the design review tonight. But the first thing I do when I go to the site before I jump out of my car is I look around for bears. And and I'm not kidding, the the bears are up there and and even during the day, so when you have young kids, we really need a play area. That isn't just open to the streets, so these these small low and and they're not really retaining walls, they're they're kind of garden walls. Um that that can kind of slow down the bear, at least you'll have some warning, see them coming. And and so that's kind of important that you have a a flat uh play area for the kids and for entertaining. Uh this is a modern farmhouse, it's but that we really have two wings of the home. And it's kind of exciting, the the middle part with a strong emphasis on the entry. Uh so the rural scouts know where to come to, so the chickens or you already sell them or we set up the pumpkins across there, you know where the entry is. It's only one story in the middle, so another thing from the previous hearing we were watching, the second story is inset. Uh both from the south and and from outside, the second story is much, much smaller than the ground floor. So it's kind of a heavy anchored ground with a natural stone material and then it tapers as it goes up. And to me also, the best window is is a big French door. And so with those outdoor decks on the second floor where you have safety, security, no bears, you can open up those French doors at night. Like this evening will be wonderful, instead of running the air conditioning, you open up those French doors and the air just blows right through. So we're just thrilled with this, um I I was gonna uh bring up with the trees on the north, that we're not touching any of them. But the one email uh that we did get and you guys got that two year packet just an hour or two before the meeting this evening. I wanna address some of those comments. So from the south looking to the north, there was a concern with this neighbor and we don't know the exact address. Cause it's blanked out, but somewhere to the south, looking up north, I'm I'm really pleased. If if I put myself in in that homeowner's shoes, would I be worried with with a new home going in, where there's an existing home, sure. Um you know, change is a little scary, but I'm very confident that the tree line to the north, there are double the height. Or more of our home, so uh when this home goes in. Only eight feet taller than the the lower home that's there now, it'll just be silhouetted against the existing trees. Not one square inch of view of the mountain will be affected at all. The other neat thing, and I'm really confident to be able to share, if if anyone is a Zoom watching or in the in the audience. Is this home actually will make the neighborhood and the properties to south more safe than it is now. Um as Claire went through with the retention of water and all the code requirements these days. You can't just run water off from your property to the neighbors anymore. So all the water will be retained from a generational rain, we've seen a couple of recently. Where the water will be captured and then percolate right down on site. So I'm really pleased that it'll be better than it is now safer and a no view will be blocked. Of course, some of the questions, and you guys might address those better than I or staff can. Of course, they're going to follow all the code and construction time and hours of operation. So for, of course, this new home will connect to the sewer system and the street, it won't have any impact on the neighbors. So um Adrian, if you have anything else to share, there's so much fun, we we love this home and and it's great to uh provide for this family.
Yeah, so one thing that you can see on here on this three D model um that you didn't have before, where we just gave you the static two D renderings, it's kind of. How we went through the process of showing this new grating and these new walls, so I kind of just wanted to walk you guys through that a little bit. Um so this wall along here is gonna be on the property line. And um the reason for that is the steepest part of this property is kind of right in here. Uh going down to this corner over on the southeast side, which is where the new bio retention areas are gonna be. So it's really sloping diagonally from the northwest corner of here all the way down into this corner. So this wall along the side allows us to kind of build that up and have this whole area be not flat. But it's gonna be less of just a sheer drop down to the street, so I mean that's, it's gonna help with mudslides in that area. There's a there's a culvert along here for drainage, so i- it's important to keep any dirt or any runoff out of there. And then the other walls down here, these are for the bio retention themselves. So the bio retention areas have to be flat, which kind of um affects the drainage there, they can't be. Sloping, they've gotta be like flat pools where the water can collect and allow. And uh kind of just. Get recirculated into the groundwater.
But they're landscape areas, it's not gonna look like a weird odd flat uh area.
Yeah, sorry, I had to turn off the plants, which were kind of.
Slowing down.
Was struggling with. So then the other part of that is this flat pad towards the back of the house and um. Basically, the reason that point was picked was uh we positioned the house to be at the same. Level as the existing one at the front, we're keeping the existing driveway. Uh and just coming across straight, uh that puts the house kind of high in the air. Which we wanted to avoid, so we dropped down to basically the midpoint of where the existing grade was. So the exist- existing grade kind of comes along like this and meets about in the middle of this area. So about half of this uh closer to the house is gonna be dug out, just to make that area be able to be flat. And then that's the place back over here, so it's gonna be pretty much balanced with all of the earth moving that's gonna be on site. Um and this wall that goes around it, it's not a big high wall, it's pretty much just for privacy.
Forty two inch high maximum, so it's a garden wall.
And so this, the grade that's shown on here is pretty accurate, this is all taken from the topographic survey. Uh so the one area that's gonna have a little bit higher of a wall, if you can see here. Is the existing grade on the west where we're cutting out, um which will be a little bit taller on only on this side, on the patio side.
Which you won't be able to see from any place except for the patio is where we have our barbecue area tucked in there.
So that allows us to just keep a natural buffer between the existing property next door. Um and have this area again be more private, that it's sunken down and then surrounded by that uh. Not necessarily retaining wall, but fence, stone wall.
The other neat thing is the retaining wall you see right in the foreground there in this image is five feet away from the south property line. So another concern of the neighbor to the south, wherever they are along there, of their new fence, and it is a beautiful fence. Is we're keeping five feet away from that with our patio area and that wall, so it's a nice area for landscaping. Uh shrubs and bushes to grow up, although of course we won't let them grow too high. Because the neighbor also brought up, there's a power pole on the corner and of course it's not in the middle of the property as as they're speculating. It's hard to tell where property lines are, as Adrian shows the lowest retaining wall towards the street, the property line is not where the paving is. It's inset ways from the 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 street and so the power pole is kind of at that that far low corner. And there are power lines that run to the west, so any of the landscaping towards the south is never gonna get that tall. It has to be trimmed down for those overhead power lines. So it's nice that in the patio area, there'll be some low shrubs for privacy, both sides, north, south. And then also with the the tree line to the further north, that this home will never block anything other than those trees, no mountain views. Will be touched at all, so we're really pleased with that, the home really fits into the site uh well, it's gonna be very compatible.
Yeah, and then the last thing is just this wall here that's at the south end of the home. And that kind of goes along with um just wanting to have a flat. Uh first floor of the home, that's all a connected living area. And with the way that this is set up here, um it does create a about a nine foot wall. Which we're breaking up with some trellises, uh there's planters here, uh I think we're gonna add a tree into this larger planter. And the other part of that is when you go down to the street over here, um which is basically from this level, uh that wall's not. Really gonna be visible, just because of the way it slopes upwards and the way these walls are are laid out. And then again, um all of these areas are filled with trees and other landscaping that are just not shown here at the moment.
So a lot of the homes we do and in this one in particular, well, a- all the homes you do are for individual families. We all do it for our kids and the parents will say, you know, this or that, but we want the house to be a great place where. The kids' friends can come over and play, and so this is all designed for that, so you you go open park on the driveway, you shoot right across the. Front porch and you go down that outside stair, not even going in the house, which is great. And so then, you know, they don't tram through the house, they go there and play and then go back out again. Uh and and then the uh bedrooms, of course, on the second floor for the privacy and security is great too to open up at night. Um so all this has been taken into account, but it's interesting, working with a client, we tell them the first thing we're doing for you guys. Is working from the outside in, for them, it's the outside, uh uh the inside out, but it's gotta look good and and the modern farmhouse. I think really works well, but it's also, boy, it's so sad in Hawaii recently. You saw that one home out of the water that had the really good roof, this has a great roof. And and uh everything sealed and this this'll hold up well over the next twenty, thirty years if we have any events. Uh we'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, we're looking for the second floor. Looks like. That closed, have a ceiling, those patios and.
Yeah, no problem. So um I mean, part of the design philosophy here is these two wings that are symmetrical, symmetrical-ish. Uh with this main kind of that, this is the most farmhouse-like aspect, this. Kind of large barn roof that comes down and creates that whole covered porch across, so um. These uh this shape goes all the way across, but. We're able to cut out some of that space within there to create outdoor space for the, especially these two bedrooms, which don't have any. Uh and then over here, we've created this outdoor space, which. Gives privacy for the primary bedroom suite over here, but also the best views here are down towards the valley. So a lot of these, um we have this patio here, but um if you saw on the floor plan when you briefly saw it, I guess. Uh there's a second staircase here and that goes up to this balcony. So this balcony up here or deck is more of an extension of the family room. Um so it's a kind of an indoor-outdoor space, which is why we still have the outdoor fireplaces up here. So it's not um, it's not a covered area, but it. Keeps the same design philosophy all the way through of those two wings, it's able to create an outdoor space within a solid roof area.
We're thinking head to Fourth of July fireworks to look out over the valley, just want to see all the small communities.
Is that Eric Oldman will clean this right here?
No, it's not, because it's not covered with a solid roof.
Is that stairwell? That's only a stairwell on the front then?
Correct, yeah, so it's a little skinny thing there, so this does count in the square feet, the stairwell. I know we are close to the max, so um I mean, part of that was also kind of creating livable spaces that don't count as. Part of the floor area.
And and window opportunities, it's tough when you have a a home to get the window into the middle parts. Do you see also in the middle the skylights into the living room, into the center volume of the space? Important for natural light and air.
I I I kinda wanna expand on on what he asked. I I'm I'm confused between the roof lines. And there seems to be like. One. Three and a half foot all the way. And connect those two sides.
There's a bridge that goes across the middle, it's a two, well, it's a story and a half volume in the middle of the house where the chimney comes up. Right behind the chimney is basically a bridge that connects the the north side to the south side inside. It's great you can go right inside the three D model, so there's the bridge, kind of, so there's the fireplace on the way with the stone going up.
Okay, so it's.
And there's the bridge, so the dining room is open to the the roof beams above and the living room has the sloping ceiling. Coming up towards the front of the home. And then there's a stairwell behind the dining room that goes up to the second floor.
So most of that center wing is not quite a two-story volume, it's about at the highest, it's about fifteen feet. So you, when you come in, you can see it all the way through. To above that dining room and see the whole ceiling, which is gonna have some cool decorative trusses up there as well.
And in the living room will be the two skylights you saw on the outside, so that's, yeah.
So that's kind of a catwalk that connects from where the stairs are back there and then bridges a- across between. The primary bedroom suite, the lawn suite, and then the two kids are gonna be on this side. So give them a little bit of privacy from each other, uh which is also, so that's one of the reasons why I would add a second staircase. Uh that. Then the only way to get between and back in the wall is uh is to cross this catwalk. So there's kind of a a separate staircase for each of those two wings.
I know when our kids were younger, they they might throw a stuffed animal off that catwalk or something, but it it's kind of fun to experience the whole volume of the home. It makes it feel a little bit bigger than it might feel otherwise.
So that. The catwalk. Also goes, sorry.
Connects the kid's wings.
So it goes across.
Yes.
And then it goes back. You know, down to those other stairs, I have. I think that makes that makes more sense. Right, right.
The only way to do this was with a three D model, you just couldn't do this with regular drawings, it's working.
I know, I think the drawing, I just had a, I had an hard time picturing what it looks like.
Yeah.
There's just differences.
Although, what is that, it's probably twice as provocative.
Yeah, the rest of that volume um.
Is open to above or below.
So there's no floor and then if if it's over a certain height, it does count twice, right?
Yeah.
So we're like fifteen.
At the highest point, so this is the second floor, so this part over here is the living room.
Where the entry is.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the fireplace, the chimney coming up. And that's the fireplace, the chimney coming up. And then the catwalk does go to the back, connected to the stairway.
But at the same time, there's a second stairway over here uh to get directly into this bedroom. Or the bed. Yeah, or it can still access this catwalk as well.
We, I always like to do a loop inside, so you don't have dead ends, you get out. The other thing is is safety. I always like another way out. You can really say a a window can be big enough. But if I can have a roof deck or something, I feel better uh getting out of there in case of emergency. It's those little things we think ahead about.
I I think. My other question, I'm confused. I guess my, the the pictures I have, we have that outside wall. That's like, I I'm not gonna call it your basement. The original picture I had was like a basement that had windows.
There's a basement in the original.
Yeah, that's.
So we, that was the initial seminal. We were.
Considering uh a basement.
Okay.
Um but that was removed due to size concerns.
Now, interestingly, the basement's square feet doesn't count, but if it is included, then it requires an extra garage space. But the garage extra space counts. And so then we're over on the square feet or we lose square feet for the third car garage.
Okay, so there's no windows or anything.
Right. There was no way to make it work. We didn't want it to have.
I I I I just have a little. Right. I liked it better with the windows. And, you know, the thought of, you know. I mean, that's a pass by review, but it was using it, having it rested down there and things like that, so.
We definitely wanted to, and we explored all the possible options in the staff. Uh there just wasn't. A real good way to make that work, especially due to some of the height issues, but how this is moving down the hillside. And we can't have a three stor- three-story building. So um. It would need to be, the second floor would need to be pushed back even further. So it would be staggered of two stories and then other two stories.
Okay.
But yeah, that was the original intent. So interesting that that made its way into the package.
Yeah.
So I would, my question was literally about the basement. I'm like, oh, wondering if it was still there or not. And I was guessing it wasn't. There were no windows and having a basement with no windows would be.
Right. They have those in, you know, the one card, you know, one card development. That's those two houses. Increase the square footage without having to default and mass it on on itself.
There's different requirements for partial basements and full basements. And the the partial basements, uh when they extend directly out to the grade. Then they kind of count as a whole story. And so that complicated the way that they're able to sign it. Well, that's that, I mean, that's something we can look at with staff, but.
I mean, that's, I I I'm not trying to make it, I was bigger.
Okay.
Yeah, just, you know, I'm just trying to think of ways that you can.
Well, I mean, we're open to all ideas, so.
They know better. I mean, it it, you know, the size is gonna look the same.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's so, you know, honestly, I I don't really care how how big it is up. It's just, you know, personally, as a design, we, because it looks the same.
We gotta make it look right no matter what. It's gotta work. And on the outside and the inside. I don't think you're gonna see it at all from the street, but it's still, it's it's a good design.
I was up there, well, at least I was up there today. There was enough, um, there's a lot of like. Trees and stuff up in that area. It's not as open. Well, it might be after you're done building it.
Well, but then those low retaining walls stepping up in the patio.
Right, right.
And we're gonna add um as mature olive trees as we can along there on the.
Those are available. And there's gonna be some grapevines.
And and I'm gonna just sort of, anyone questions, because I wanna go build.
No.
And we can ask them back here for discussion if they like this.
No more questions.
And the Regal family wants to speak. I guess they can speak as part of the audience. They don't have to tag on to our. Thank you so much. Yell at us if you need anything later.
Oh, yeah, I'll 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 bring that up there.
My name is Steve Reebaly, and I'm here with my daughter Lisa and grandson Jamie and granddaughter Gab. So Lisa spent her college years at six oh two Auburn, where we have been for thirty years. So we are the home that connects both the land. In order to access this, and we've had a beautiful stay in Sierra Madre for thirty years. And uh you know, it's my wife and I, Cindy and I, bringing for our daughter and great kids to be a hundred and fifty feet away from us. And uh so that's gonna be a beautiful thing. But we've raised five children in our home for thirty years. And so we've been in a long, long time. Uh our, you have an idea of the construction, um and the quality and material. Uh we're looking at using one of the top-rated uh contractors who's done work and sitting there, a lot of earth, Marty Perry. And uh the dolls, yeah, I I've known Steve for thirty. We've done lots of projects together, thirty plus kids. Adrian, I think you were in high school. So. We're looking to do this, a beautiful home that's extremely energy efficient. Obviously, it's solar and. Bio-retention basins and retaining the trees on the site. Uh the landscaping is gonna be absolutely stunning. And we're looking forward to this opportunity. If you have any questions for me, I can answer questions, uh bring Steve back up or. Would you like to speak to my daughter? Uh because those are, those are the folks that we're building this home with and for. We're sitting right here. We are not a spec developer.
I have a different question. How do you never, how do people at six ninety get to the property?
Excuse me?
How do the people at six ninety get to the property? You know, here's part ninety-five, you know, the 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 property to the left. So you're six oh two, you're.
Yeah, I'm saying, we're six oh two. So we're at the, we're at the top.
Yeah.
Uh on the right.
Yeah, no, I just. I'm trying to, it looks like it's a mailbox. I think it's just.
Which property are you referring to?
Oh, six ninety, but I see.
The one to the west.
I guess they go in through, in between the two properties on the offer, on the, on the, on the real Auburn, go to the left. Okay, that's okay.
Anyone have any questions? I wanna thank the staff too for working with the doll family. Uh you know, we. They have this now well over a year and gone back and forth many times because uh we believe in doing the right thing. Appreciate your consideration. I appreciate uh. Giving us the thumbs up tonight. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I I did try to buy the property. I didn't have any interactions with anybody.
Didn't have my, I think, so, okay. Um so at this time, I'm gonna open up to the public. So anybody wants to speak on this project? There's not very many people here, so we can do a little louder to people.
Hello, I'm Marion Woodford, six eighteen Auburn. I'm the one on the south, right next door to Suzanne. And um Suzanne and I were gonna do this together and everything. And she. She already talked about her her trees and all. I just wanna say that. I I'm not objecting to the house. I'm just objecting that when you're doing the excavating. That you saved my orange trees and my live oak. I mean, my live oak has been there many, many years. And it's very healthy. And it's only about eight feet away from my retaining wall. And then what I'm worried about is the roof. So I did, that's one of the major things that I want to.
Okay, just begin the.
Oh, we wanna make sure that we.
Is that okay?
That's good, yeah.
Um so anyway, this is basically what I wanted to talk about is is uh my house and how it looks. The only thing that I was worried about is that swimming pool. And so, since it's not there now, it was in the first plant. So I wanted to be sure that we kind of talk about that because. That's only about five or six feet away from my property lot. And that creates a problem because my guest house is right there. So. Okay, so that's, that's my concerns. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Did we confirm the pool is not part of this product?
The pool is not a part of the project.
Uh who wants to go first? Anybody?
I'll go first. It's. It's a um. It's not a spec house. I love that. Um it's very interesting. It took me about an hour to figure. I sat at home, kind of figured it out. Um how it worked with the, uh now I understand that it has a walkway in it. It's kind of fun. Um. The uh, the the. The south side of it, because of that nine-foot wall, is pretty menacing. Um but I think you've broken that up. I like the windows for help to break it up. But you're breaking that up with a different texture, makes it your stone on the bottom. And then the house was nicely stepped back on the top. Um so you reduce kind of the mass into that backside. Um. I think, you know, hopefully, we can, you know, hopefully there'll be trees that kind of block that for me. I think they're gonna want their own privacy. Um but, you know, we can say we're planting trees, but, you know, some if they die. Everything, we can still see that. But I I don't think a lot of that's gonna be seen. Um I do like the look of the house. I I like that you put the garage not facing the street, that you're able to do that. You have it tucked in the back there, so it's not a prominent feature. Um. The roofs are interesting with the, with the open patios. I like the idea. Um. As far as the design of the house, I like that farmhouse style. Uh it's very kind of modified farmhouse, but it's, it looks great. I don't have any, any problems with it. Or concerns.
Yeah, so. I'm sure this has been worked out, but my, my question would be about like drainage or the water from those open patio areas uh up top. Um and I, I do have friends who are homeowners or whatever, where they have something like that and it. It either unexpectedly floods something above or below. Um so I'm just a little curious what the plan is. I know it doesn't rain that often here, but when it does, it's always very surprising. Um and so that, that was something that I was. Curious about. Um the catwalk, I'm also a little curious, the three D rendering didn't show. You know, exactly the railing or other things like that, um just in terms of safety and other things like that, have that big drop and. Making sure that we're not having, um you know, some kid climbing up and and throwing more than a stuffed animal overboards. Um so uh safety on that catwalk with the curiosity of of mine too, though I'm sure it's combined with all the codes, et cetera. So. Those were the areas that I was a little bit curious to hear more about. Um other than that, uh it does look like it is. You know, interesting architecturally, it's not a goodie better home with this design and the two, two areas. And so I, I I do like that it's been custom designed with the need of the family in mind. Um.
You you wanted to address that? Could you address that?
I'd love to. Good, good questions. And let's not leave those lingering. So for the record, Steve Doll again, architect answering the follow-up question. Uh we, it it's really brave with with these projects now. I mean, it it's tough with a client upfront. But we have to bring the civil engineer at the beginning now. And so we brought in a real civil engineer. Back in the day, us architects would think, and that's never a good idea with with a rain there. And we've seen that recently. So uh I don't know what the code is. Josh might be able to bring that up. But but we have to design the civil engineers for like a a fifty-year rain event. I mean, not just that hurricane that I had four inches at at my yard, but um. We we had to calculate it um uh so that all the water on all the hard surfaces, all the rooftops, all the patios. But interesting, working with the civil engineer and the landscape architect, all the patios have permeable pavers. So some water will soak in. But let's say it really comes down fast and hard, that retaining basin at the bottom is gonna capture all that water. And all the landscape areas. It's been fully calculated. Right now, it's allowed by code on that property. All the rain can come down and walk across the neighbors to the south. Now we can't do that. So all the water will be captured. And then it percolates in on site. Um and it's all calculated. And then when it goes later through plan check. The civil engineering doesn't go to regular plan check. It goes to a special civil engineer plan check. So it'll really be done uh safely. On the inside railing, uh of course, these days.
I love that follow-up on that. I was mostly curious about the patios that are on second story.
Yeah, so all that water has to be calculated. Uh any hard surface has to be calculated. Where that runs off and how it's captured. It stays on site and then percolates in, yeah.
Somehow, I was actually literally curious about where it was gonna run off.
I think you even showed the downsides. You could look at the exterior.
Alright, alright. I'll 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 check out the downsides.
And that's checked with a plumbing engineer. Yeah. Inside railings. Uh when I started, and I'm pretty old now, the the railings could be, I think they started it at seven inches apart. Now you can't take a four-inch wall, which I think is the size of a really small infant. It cannot pass through any railing anywhere uh through a railing. So the 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 railings have to be less than four inches apart. And uh whenever we design homes, you see in the magazines or in Europe, these railings that go horizontally. I never knew those. These kids will just climb right up. So all of our railings go vertically. It's it's tougher to keep the prisoners in. But they can't climb them. And um back when I started, and this is fairly recently, residential, you only had it in thirty-six inches high in railings. Now they've raised it to the commercial height of forty-two inches. And I think that helps. So no ball of four inches or or smaller. I mean, they were can pass through at forty-two inches high. Yeah.
And what is the biggest drop from that catwalk in terms of vertical?
It's like nine feet. Um uh Adrian is a kid who used to um sled down our stairway. Uh you know, it padded and everything, but um it's too hard to jump.
The drainage from the roof that's going down south, does that have to be excavated to those, those, those type of basins? You know, and and doing a lot of digging on the south side of the property?
No, the neat thing was with all the landscape, they it can percolate along the way. That's just for the the extra runoff.
I I just wanted to clarify about those roof decks as well. Um so we have that lower roof that kind of skirt that goes around. And that actually goes higher than before the decks.
Okay.
So um those are gonna have to have like a floor drain. And then those will go down to the downsides and connect to the rest of the the lid.
That is, so it'll be like a light flow to a floor drain or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's basically like a flat roof within, has a a drain.
Okay.
Like a roof drain, just anything go down.
That makes.
Yeah.
I I do, I wanted to, do you have any problem with undergrounding the power pole? Undergrounding the power? I mean, maybe haven't looked at it specifically.
Haven't looked at it. Boy, we'd love to figure out the entire neighborhood of your ground with power poles.
I tend to do that with, you know, with new construction this week. It eliminates the very problem that, you know, the neighbor brought up and, which I know sometimes. Possibly, you know, drenching and all that kind of stuff.
And it's not really their pool. It's shared with the neighbor to the south. They they always put them right on the property line. So I don't know if the neighbors, it's expensive if they wanna share and go in. And and it would, kind of like a shared fence, a shared power pole. If everyone would share and do that, wouldn't that be great? But I, uh we can't talk to the neighbor. If everyone would share and do that, wouldn't that be great, but I we can't talk to the neighbors and commit to that huge cost.
Is the, is your power coming underground then?
Oh yeah, we we have.
That's underground, okay.
Yeah, yeah. The new service. Yeah.
Yeah, that's
Yeah.
I I figured it did.
From the pole. Yeah, so there's a separate going along the street, there's power lines overhead. So that's actually the road, which is the private road that connects all the way up to his house, which is at the top of the street. So it's it's an easement, basically, on his property for the rest of the homes to access it.
It looks like straight, but it's really an east face. Payers use it. We'll be here.
So first of all, it's very exciting to see that a new house can go in, buy all the materials and all of that. I like the fact that the garage stuff, the way you're keeping the similar pattern, I think you're going to put in a half, you know, with the main system. Roughly with the new top of roof being at about twenty something feet, so I mean, you're touring about it to be another eight, nine, ten feet higher than the what's there now, reasonable, you know, that all makes sense. My only concern, and I think the siding of it all that works, being a flat area, rather than by nice, you know, retaining wall, I think that makes sense, the usage, have a nice barbecue out there, you know, very visible space. My only concern that I have is, and I'm just trying to be very fair to all the applicants that come in and all the projects that we see, who are always stressing this idea of don't make your, the bulk of the house greater than what you're utilizing, the house that you're building, right? Square footage wise, we're talking about a thirty nine hundred square foot house, two story. Square footage wise, that makes sense, it's reasonable. The only thing is that, depending on some of the additions and the moves that have been made architecturally on the second floor, this really is a bulk of about a five thousand square feet. So, that's that's sort of the concern that I Some of the moves that have been done where you've taken the bulk of this, split it into two, you have a higher roof space in the middle that counts partially because of the walkway. Then you have cutaways of patios and exterior spaces, which are nice, but they're they're not being added to the end of the of the house, they're being added, and then you have another bulk of mass staircase, whatever it might be at the end of it. And therefore creating a larger mass, right? And so that's my concern, and then we're always harping on the fact that the second floor needs to be stepping back as it's going up to create a nice sort of rhythm, and of course, stepping back costs, when you're looking at it from the street or from the south side, which is the concerning side of it. By stepping it, you're reducing the full breadth of that wall going up, and so I think you guys realize that, and I think I would like to see some improvements on that, to to be fair to all the applicants that we get that we're always harping on, I think we should also require that of this house. I'm not against your whole, you know, walkway thing in the middle, your outdoor patio space and all that, it's just the resulting effect of that that we're concerned with. So the rest of it, I think, the palette and all that looks great, I think it's gonna be a nice house, if we can kind of remedy some of those things.
More experience than everybody out here with this volume and mass issue. And it's not a good critique of the design, it's a beautiful house, but you have the upper limits of the square footage. So to everybody else coming in with a similar project, it's filled with a double volume space. And it creates, exactly what you're saying, who's the architect, you point, but I've seen it more than one attempt, and it's not a criticism, we had I'll give you an example, we had a one story house on Orange Grove. And we wanted, at the time, we only had a four thousand square foot limit. And the applicant was had a design in mind that his wife wanted, and he had this sixteen hundred square foot porch off the back of his house with a pool that was smaller than the porch. So when we looked at the roof space, it was massive, so they changed it so they got under the thirty nine, you know, the four thousand square foot space so she could have, and they downsized the patio a little bit, and they went they they didn't have to put any plant, that was when the regulations changed, so it's it's not, it's not that we don't like the design, I I think it's beautiful, like, oh, well, that would depend on the new, but we have a problem with double space. It doesn't create that mass, and I think I I have to go along with coming to take another look at it, try and something with that double space. So that we don't have similar problems in the future that other people are getting in similar bus, we change the design standards and the square footage just without reason, to thirty five hundred square feet, and if your if your lot was bigger, and they allow the space bigger, I would say no property is a gold board of this house, but I think it's gonna have to be some adjustments to that somehow. And I don't know that I can move just off on that basis, just because of the the appearance of of this, like, of the log is greater than the square footage allowing. But, creative architect, I don't, it's up to you, you don't wanna have a vote on it, it sort of sounds like a sort of two two, but at the same time then if you wanna address those or talk about maybe in fact to redesign it. Sorry, but unless you're held accountable.
Well, you did say that there was a problem in the past, and and we get that, and so you changed the square footage limits. And so tonight, we're here at a design review hearing, the hearing before us had a CUP. So different, we're just dealing with design, we are meeting all the square feet. We we are under the the new limit that you did pass to avoid the situation. So we are already lower than what it could have been in the past. The other interesting thing with Sierra Madre, that we don't do in other cities, is you're counting the garage, yes, it's mass. But interesting, Commissioner, you brought up, you know, livable square feet that people need. But a lot of this, four hundred, five hundred square feet is the garage, no other city does that, so although the house seems like it's big, you subtract five hundred square feet out of that, that's a big chunk. The the neat thing is, and 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 all of you are, seem to be in agreement, you really like the design, I think the design is terrific. And it does step back, the second floor steps back from from the south, and it tapers, so it meets the height limit. It meets the square foot limits, the second floor is is much, much smaller than the ground floor. So it does everything your design guidelines ask for and require. There's there's not a precedent setting here, because as all of you did bring up, it's a very unique home. With with the play of indoor outdoor space, it's not a solid mass, you're gonna feel it going in, you're gonna have the shadow lines, the trellis. But there's a simplicity of it by keeping the roof through, I I would almost make a case, if you get rid of some of that, it it might be a little bit more complicated, a little bit more fussy. So this is very simple, with just the two wings upstairs and the lower portion in the middle. It's gonna be tough, I think, to do, to shrink it and have it still be a great design.
You know, the other part of that is on this street itself, Claire brought up the the neighborhood compatibility. And on specifically on this private street, most of the other homes are are way bigger than this.
They are massive.
I mean, I know it's based off of the size of the lot, and that limit is around four thousand square feet. But, for example, the home to the north is is over seven thousand square feet, I think, off the top of my head.
And the other ones across the street, so ours is gonna feel like, well, it is, it's smallest one on the block.
There are some smaller ones on the blocks than smalls. Yeah, there are smaller ones, but there are much bigger ones as well.
And and besides the one to the north, beautiful home, it has a ten foot retaining wall right at the paving. It's it's actually over the the property line, whereas now, and so your codes have changed for the better. We can't go higher than forty two inches on any yard retaining wall, so they step up, we'll have flowers down below before you even hit that first garden wall, so it is, it's a great design, and by having it go in and out, I I think it really does everything you want to. There's no precedent setting here, because it's so unique, it's so special, it's it's a wonderful design.
For for example, as well, one of the ways that we try to break up that large mass, because we do kind of have two stories that are vertical, is that we have those two wings, and that center part, even though it's kind of double spaced, I mean, it's a steep slope coming down. With a with a gable going the other direction.
Yeah, no, I agree, it's beautiful, it's it's you sort of hit it well, you know, to make it look, you know, so you get what you want out of the middle of the house, it's it's gorgeous.
So I'm just trying to think of other ways to break up that mass.
Yeah.
To make it feel more like what the square feet is, as you said.
So you're, if if we're worried about the mass in the inside and the back part where we you barely are gonna make your head height with with the catwalk going across. If we lowered that anymore, then there's no connection, which we have to have between the kids wing and the parents wing. We can't have two separate second floors, if you put them together, then you're gonna have a bigger mass altogether upstairs. It it's tricky and something, as as you saw, even the earlier designs worked with staff, they beat us up a lot, and and it's it really works well with your code, with your guidelines. It's a good design, and if anyone follows it, there's no other lot like this, no other family needs like this.
I mean, there are the fifteen, we got areas in the properties that have fifteen thousand foot lots, and so that's the kind of headache we're thinking about, you know, for what, almost sixteen years, I don't know, I hate to be because I agree with you, I think it's it's if this area deserves an exception, this is probably the one area that that it does. The house above the house north of you was a thirty thousand square foot lot, a huge slope. The guy below who has that huge house built that way, and he had going around with that whole project when that, you know, there, but it was a unique lot and a unique location. It's just a strange, it's a very unique place in the town, so I don't disagree with your explanation.
And interesting, with your discussion, you said that that maybe that our exception is okay. But the thing is, we're not asking for an exception, we're not here asking for a variance, we're not asking for anything special. We want to meet the code, we want, we're below the code in every aspect, there is no exception required.
So so we realized that needing the code to the letter of the law is something that you can
The commissioners are pointing to not the square footage, but the findings required for high bulk steel and mass.
Yeah, I understand.
So, but he mentioned exceptions, so so that was a little bit different than needing, or not asking for an exception.
Yeah, no, you cleverly designed it, so you met all the requirements, I understand that, we've seen that before, it's just that like I said, with the sixteen thousand script with porch on the guy's house.
I I know, and and that's that's a gimme, so so let us know, and and it's a team approach, and we really worked well with staff, and that if you have a specific idea or something, but but I I I see where you're coming from, and I've been there where where you are too, sitting on the planning commission for six years myself in South Pasadena, but we've been there, we've tried that, and and I don't know if what you're asking is is possible, keeping this this clever and and unique, good design.
Well, we believe in your talents.
A touche, that's tough what you're saying.
Well, because, I mean you look at, I I can point out a few things, and we can be here all day, you can everybody and all of that, but I think that to be fair and to apply what we're doing here to everybody that comes through here and be fair about it. We need to mention these things, and those are the things that we're guiding. And so I think in this house, especially sitting on a plateau as the hill goes up, we need to reduce the mass in the center.
So it does step up specifically from the south already?
There. And but that's not your main thing, because as you're looking from the south, you're stepping back on the south is a little bit. But also this helps too, right, on those sides, coming in on the east and west side, so you have outdoor spaces that are flanked by building program pieces that are enlarging the the look of the second story, that's my issue, and you understand.
I mean, I I'm I'm actually inclined to, I would, in my words, use an exception, because I think it's we design in a unique area and a part of the city. Even though there may be times when some things is just pushed back for for another area, so I mean, I'm in front in my mind to sort of make an exception, but
So for example, the staircase, the secondary staircase, it's sticking way out there in the front of the to create a space inside that's outdoor, that's not counted.
Sure.
To increase the massing of the
Right.
Those are the
Yeah, no, your mind is better at it, those are me, I'm just saying voluntarily, I I that that's my only reason for sort of giving an exception that means the way was the world, but if that can be, could you reduce, do you see any way of reducing any of those?
Commissioner, you's right, and and we just covered the secondary staircase, because we have an indoor access there. But then if you think about the farmhouse look, the symmetry at the front, the entry, it's gone, you've lost that design element, it's awkward, it's unbalanced. So I see your point, but the 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 way to fix that doesn't work. With with this design, right, because then you've lost the symmetry, you've lost the 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 center entrance, the the roof coming down. We can hack off that that stair, and it is setback, it's less bulky, but then it's not a great design. So it it's it's tough.
It's like when you're writing a a award winning novel, right? It's not always the first draft that hits.
And it isn't, and we've been through with staff three times already, yeah.
And once you get it there, it's gonna be great.
Is it discussion time?
If we could help, yeah.
So I I see Commissioner's point, but as it does seem like we have a code, and we've had a architect who's looking for something very visually beautiful, but also is trying to take advantage of elements of the code to do something let's say, creative, to expand the space. And really finding all those edge cases where, okay, well, if we do exactly this, we can we can meet it exactly. And they've done that. I also see your point in 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 saying that, you know, we don't necessarily want to set a precedent that every developer that comes up here should try to find the weirdest edge case and say, oh, we have a giant porch or something like that. I also think that we can take the people who happen to do this, or the architects who happen to do this, which I think will be people who aren't spec developers in general, because if you do weird things like this, sometimes families don't want to buy them, I mean, this is a slightly odd house, if you're coming up to it as a as a different family with different needs. You know, the catwalk, all these other elements. So from my opinion, you can take the developers and the architects that choose to find these exceptions on a case by case basis, and you use exceptions, but in this case, I think it's well warranted in that I I at least like all those outdoor spaces, especially here in California. And I would prefer that personally versus something that's smaller, but doesn't have as much outdoor space upstairs, the way that they've broken it up. And I do think, however, we should continue to consider things case by case, because there will be people who find the edge cases in the way to massage the code, where it meets the code in the letter of the law, but not the spirit. And, you know, sometimes the spirit will be extremely off, as in the porch example. Here, I think the spirit is, to me, roughly there, so that was nice.
If you wanna make a motion, you can get a second, you can vote yourself, you have any more discussion? No, I'm good, okay, I mean, I just think it's sort of a different opinion, because like, in theory, we like it, and I think you're right, I like the outdoor porch. We we encourage, you know, porches in this town, so they try to create some of those other spaces. It's created, and then with balance, and talking about the staircase and everything, and the apartment line. They've given them that outdoor space, and and then, you know, in the sort of building, they have some double volume and stuff that we can look at suspiciously, but I don't think that's the intent, because I think again, it's a unique area, so, you know.
Right.
I threw it out there to see if they had any wiggle and you think it's something they want to be designed other than, you know, and they had the best one, which is as far as I'm concerned, so.
Well, it may not be the intent, but it's not accidental that it exactly meets the code, like despair, we had not like one inch left.
Fifteen versus sixteen, all that kind of stuff.
Right, and and if we just say we we took those those upstairs porches that are not really part of the square footage, but
Yeah.
look like they're part of the square footage, we moved those to the back, and we 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 kept the symmetry in the front, and moved all the feathers to the front, put those in the back. I don't think it's gonna look that. I mean, it 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 could look different. I mean, it would look a little bit different, but from the front, I don't think it would be as that noticeable from, you know, to to the street, so. Um, that's just my thought, right?
We on purpose didn't do anything to the back, there there's no windows that look out there, uh, the the primary bedroom looks to the front. The kids' bedroom, the dining room, no decks, we we don't want anything that that home that you did notice, it's landlocked, it's it's flag lot back there. They have primary view out there, and we don't wanna impede on their property, so you put balconies in the back, we just can't do it. The the it's a good point, but we did study that, it's also the west, the sun coming, and there is another reason why we don't want anything out to the west at all. We're far enough away from the south and and change that it's okay, the north with the trees, and 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 to the east to the street, but the west. It is like off limits, the the no decks can be out there, it it would just overlook their whole little yard that they have and right into their windows.
And I think it speaks to the fact that they put a big space for the family and not the, you know, everybody else, right? I'll make an exception since you're the only one spoke, please hold up, I'll give you one minute.
I just have a. A notice, I looked at the plans, and when I looked at the plans and the patio. Looked like it had a reaching wall around it, but it only looked like, looking at the design, it looked like it was short. Reaching. This was, but this is nine feet high.
No.
That's what he said.
No, that's the that's the basement.
That's the supply basement.
The the retaining wall is meant to be able to change this.
Football wall?
No, you're looking at it from the bottom of it, so you might see the top of it a little bit, but no, you won't see that there.
You guarantee that.
Well, he's.
Geometry, I can't.
She's gone with the wall, she's gone with the wall near her property, and that's only forty two inches.
Right, which place?
I think she's worried that it's nine feet tall at her property. No, it's it's thirty, it's forty two inches high, five feet away from their property.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't put a nine foot wall next to you.
Do that, and then.
You're gonna trap me there, no, we wouldn't do it.
Well, so how do I?
Sorry to confuse you.
You can still vote, no, I think you need to propose this, so, yeah, we're both public on it, but do I have a motion on this, and it sort of seems to have a consensus, so.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the design review permit twenty two oh eight. And appi- allow that, and application to allow the demolition of existing structure. And new construction of thirty nine hundred and thirty one square feet, um, as presented.
Seconded.
Second, although it's different.
I am.
I am. I'm against.
I am.
Now, so three, one, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Move on to the next item, one seventy four South Lima Street. Application to allow a renovation of another, another development, and construction of a new two story, ten four hundred and ninety six square feet, same for single family justice.
And there will afford a living residence.
The third project before the commission tonight is for design review permit twenty two oh three at one seven four South Lima Street. The applicant is requesting to fully demolish the existing single family residence and construct a new single family residence with a second story. Pursuant to Sumer, Sumer Municipal Code seventeen point twenty, one zero two seven, subsection B. The construction of the second story requires a designer permit. The residence will consist of four bedrooms, three and a half bathrooms, a laundry room, den, kitchen, dining, living, and dining rooms. With a large front porch, granite entrance wire, and attached to your car garage with Carlos patio at the rear. Also includes site improvements, which include a wide end driveway, new surface materials, landscaping. Uh, with all trees to be preserved, and a new and new privacy walls. The project is located on South Lima between Vermona and Manzanita Avenue. On Lima, it is on the east side. Uh, the lot is eleven thousand and thirteen square feet, it is zone residential, single family, and has a land use of residential low density. Its neighborhood comprises primarily of single family residences that transitioned into multifamily, that have moved towards Mariposa Avenue. Now also indicated uh on screen, the residences with two stories for reference. Here's a closer aerial uh top image of the site. Um, there is a neodar cedar in front of the existing house on the site. Um, and it has been noted that it has uh been topped to clear the coral lines that you can see there fairly uh adjacent to the street. Um, and it exhibits sparse canopy with dead wood, the tree will be preserved and protected in place nonetheless. There's also a great myrtle in the parkway just below those coral lines. Uh, which will also be preserved and protected in place through the construction of this project. Here are some site photographs, on the top left is of the subject property, to the top right is the neighbor directly across. The bottom left is the neighbor directly north, and the bottom right is the neighbor directly south of the subject. Following slides, have photos of the site, on the top left is of the front of the property facing southeast. The top right is of the front of the property facing northeast, the bottom row is at the rear, on the left facing southeast, and on the right facing northeast. Summarize the development standards for this project, is a fully code compliant project. Gross floor area is just below the maximum allowed of three thousand five hundred and one, as proposed three thousand four hundred and ninety six square feet. It does have a building height of twenty three feet. And has uh multiple setbacks for its first and second floor that are all within. Required setback requirements. Neighborhood analysis was conducted for this project, which shows that the proposed project. Uh, with an accessible square footage of three thousand thirty eight square feet, is within the top one third of property survey. Uh, of the forty one properties is number five of the top. The site will be mostly graded, saving for the garden area and retaining walls at the backyard, and all trees on site. Heartcaping involves the removal and replacement of the existing driveway. In the same location to now be designed with a paper instead of a curb. There will be all new existing landscaping around the property, uh, that retains all existing trees. The driveway also includes uh permeable interlocking neighbors. And the existing sidewalls that you see uh holding in in the dark lines there on screen. Uh, these are part, these are very privacy walls and retaining walls, uh, retaining walls for raised planters. And highlighted on screen in orange lines is new privacy retaining and uh. Yeah, new new, I'm sorry, new privacy and retaining laws, uh, where privacy wall with nine and two five feet in height. Now highlighted with blue lines and with shapes online is uh on screen, or is a greenish system, uh, to be installed throughout the site. Along with rain barrels that will be installed at the downstairs around the building. The proposed building will occupy the same general footprint as the existing building, as you see on screen, outlined in red is the original building footprint, and behind that in gray is the proposed building. In general, the existing building, uh, I'm sorry, the proposed building expands upward and slightly toward the rear, but pulls away from the south side. The front yard setback is maintained at forty seven feet nine inches. With the existing structure and includes the projection of a front porch by five feet. The north side yard maintains a similar setback. To the existing structure of six feet and four inches. Which includes projections of a fireplace and bay window, which will leave uh more than three feet of clearance on the north side. South side yard setback is proposed at thirteen feet, uh, reduced from the existing structure setback of seven feet and two inches. Uh, measured from a two foot articulated building extrusion on a soft elevation to the property line. Lastly, the rear yard setback as proposed will be fifty eight feet and one inch, reduced from the existing structure by approximately five feet. But the will be well within the fifteen foot requirement. Right, one more point, deciding and planning of the proposed structure are done with the intent to preserve the open space in the backyard. First floor includes foyer, family room, living room and dining rooms, along with a kitchen, en suite bedroom, outer room, stairwell and garage. There is a thirty four foot square, thirty four square foot area, uh, wrapped by the stairs with a high ceiling that is being additionally counted per development standards. Uh, and added to the gross floor area at the first floor. On the table on your right, you see the habitable area of the enclosed area, uh, residential area is one thousand eight hundred and forty five square feet. Added to the broad is four hundred and twenty four square feet. Uh, along with the high ceiling area of thirty four square feet gives a subtotal of around four two thousand three hundred and three square feet. In addition to that, uh, there is a front porch, the development intends to allow exceptions to front porches that face the street. Its size is two hundred fifty eight square feet, and the trellis at the back is two hundred five square feet, but it is not covered by a solid roof, therefore not counted towards floor area. The second story includes the primary bedroom, two on-street bedrooms and den area. The primary bedroom opens to a rear projecting roof deck with paravet walls around, which is stepped back equidistantly from the building line at the first floor. At the north and east sides by four feet and two inches, a distance of. Uh, the the distance of roof deck from the north property line is approximately fourteen feet and six inches. As we'll soon see, in the open area, uh, between the roof deck and adjacent property, there will be proposed landscaping that incorporates three existing great murals. And and with new sweet bay, which are tall shrubs, uh, which can range in height between ten and twenty five feet. The total area of the second floor is one thousand one hundred and ninety three square feet, that does not include that balcony and deck, which is not covered by a solid roof. So the second story, I'm sorry. Second story walls are in clo- uh, closed walls are further step back from the building line of the first floor. From the front property line, the second floor will be step, uh, have a setback from the front property line, uh, fifty three feet and nine inches. Sixteen feet from the south property line, eleven feet, ten inches from the north side. And seventy three feet, one inch from the rear property line, and again, these are setbacks for the second floor. The elevations best demonstrate the contemporary Prairie's architectural styling through the low pitched hip roofs, symmetrical massing. conspicuous front porch entry adorned by large columns, and emphasis on horizontal detailing. Each elevation is penetrated generally centered to wall planes, windows at the second story are smaller in respect to the privacy of occupants as well as neighbors. On the east elevation, I have pointed out several height areas here, the maximum possible height that this building can be measured from at the lowest point at property line. To the highest roof ridge is twenty five feet nine inches. However, development standards outline a height as required from the low point. At the property line to a point one third between the top plate and the roof ridge, uh, which results in twenty three feet height. Uh, and then from the point where the building is the greatest, the highest point of the building, that would be twenty four feet and three inches. Emphasis to horizontal detailing is continued on all elevations. As demonstrated by the precast belt course aligned at the or or near the sill of the windows on the first and second floors. Precast crown molding detailing is also present below heaves on each elevation. Roof would be clad in a custom grade concrete tile, exterior walls in a smooth stucco of a saddle pad or tan color. Terminated in gray wider than the roof color, brick veneer is used in the front porch, on the chimney, and on the piers of patio trellis supports. Within the front porch, the brick veneer wraps the walls, terminating at interior corners to avoid abrupt changes in materials. The chimney will be capped by a galvanized steel throughout, designed as shown on screen. Windows and doors include muntin detailing, a simulated flooded light, designed as shown on screen as well. Exterior wall lighting are designed as bronze lanterns and include blazing to the dark sky compliant. Lastly, the garage door will be a four panel roll up door with windows in a color to complement the field color of the stucco and brick. The Prairie styles uh further characterized should be emphasis of horizontal elements. Uh, demonstrated by the consistent use of under-eaved precast trim. Banning detail wrapping all exterior wall surfaces. And long thin horizontal brick veneer plating, wrapping the corners of the garage to provide uh the appearance of columns. The landscaping proposed incorporates with the existing trees, great murals and cypress line the bounds of the property. And focal points include camphor, olive, and neodar cedar. A new focal point, uh, planted forest, uh, red bud is proposed in the planter wall area at the backyard. The proposed shrubbery and brown cover plant palette assembled on screen will complement the existing proposed trees. Uh, existing and proposed trees while also being uh compliant with the water efficient landscape ordinance. Now on screen is the three D massing, which shows its context to the surrounding neighborhood. In the top left is an aerial view from the northwest. Below that, uh, aerial view from the northeast, and to the right is aerial view from the southeast. Three D models have also been provided for a better visual representation of the proposed structure. However, I wanna point out that there is a slight inconsistency, uh, the trellis at the back patio. Uh, the architectural plans are are meant to preside over this, where the three D renderings do not show the piers. Uh, that that those kids are intended to be rendered in there, as well as the wrapping of the brick veneer around the garage, that is also intended to be part of this architectural design. And then a three D render has also been provided, which superimposes the view of the site from the street. The neodar cedar tree and the great myrtle are uh to be protected are present on this view as well. In order to approve the design review permit, uh, the commission must make the following findings, first that the project. Uh, maintains a single family zoning land use, meets all development standards, and the applicable general plan goals, single family residential use. Second, that the proposed project does not result in intensification of the use, meeting standards for and requirements for parking, unchanged from the existing condition. All existing mature trees will also be preserved. The proposed project maintains neighborhood compatibility through consistent Prairie style details. And citing similar to the existing, compatible with the existing form and patterns of the developed neighborhood. Fourth, that the proposed Prairie style home replaces the existing ranch style home, ranch being a common style amongst your moderate tract development. The proposed design includes a second floor that is meaningfully stepped back from the line of the first floor, and is well articulated, so that it does not dominate the neighborhood. And fits well into its foothold village setting. Fifth, that the proposed project preserves all existing mature trees, providing privacy screening from adjacent private property. The design of the second floor uh mitigates impacts on privacy by being further stepped back and away from the side property lines as compared to the first floor. Sixth, that a coherent project-wide design is demonstrated through forms of massing characteristic of Prairie style architecture. Demonstrated by its low profile spanning in horizontal features, as well as its prominent old front porch. Um, there is a seventh finding, but it did not affect the bulletin, that there is no uh height requirement uh being requested to be issued. And the eighth finding for this uh is also not required in that. Uh, finding that number eight is required for projects that exceed a size threshold, in this case for an eleven thousand square foot lot, that size threshold will be. Uh, gross floor area of thirty five hundred square feet, this project meets a gross floor area of three thousand four hundred and ninety six square feet. Ninth, the planning commission may adopt planning commission resolution twenty two dot twenty as presented, which approves design review. Sorry, design review permit twenty two oh three. And may adopt the planning commission resolution with modifications. Deny the request. Or continue the hearing and provide direction to staff in the afternoon. That is recommending that planning commission adopt planning commission resolution twenty two dash twenty is presented. To approve designer review permit twenty two oh three. That concludes my presentation. You have a presentation uh for the architect to present? I'm I'm happy to take questions ahead of that.
Yeah, anyone want questions before we have that? Good evening, um chairperson, person and commissioner and that. Uh I need to stay in line. I am the designer of this project, um. I'm representing the owners present this project in front of you. First of all, I'd like to uh thank your staff, okay, um they're helping us along the way and so that we can present this project to you tonight. And um. I really, I really believe he really understands this project because he has dissected this project very detailed. And he's had a very good staff report. So I'm I'm not. So I don't, I don't want to waste your time since now it's nine fifteen already. And um so I don't, I don't want to repeat what he said on the report, but I'd like to point out a few things. Um. Even I forgot what I prepared because I'm sitting here for two and a half hours. Uh and I and also I've been in hospital for I have. I have the the entire afternoon, okay, waiting for my uh treatment because the machine was down. So um I'll just make it short and and precise and quick. Uh this is a a new single family home, two story single family home. Uh replacing a one story single family home. Um when when we talk about a two story house, okay, people kind of scare about, okay. You put in two story house replacing a single story house, what about the privacy, the massing, the bulk, okay? Um. Uh that affect this neighborhood. Uh so. When we design this house, we not only focus on what the owners need, but we also, okay, pay attention to the to the neighborhood. And the the owner. Uh the owners of the past ten years. Uh only for the last few years. Uh they um they ran it out, okay, because of this. Uh kind of all and and the family members had some special need, okay, that they. Um they they move on to a newer home, so now they're they expect. You complete, rebuild this house so that they can move back. And raise their family. Um this lot is sitting on um. Limon Street, okay, is running east west with the front door facing west. Um. When we talk about the two story houses, it's not. The first two story house in this short, small block. Uh there's already three existing two story house. Uh one is. One forty five, one is one fifty four, one is one ninety five. And this house looks like a little bigger than the, not a little bigger, it is bigger than the original house that is going to be replaced. Uh but. Then there's another much bigger house also exists on this block, which is one ninety five. From my sense of record is thirty five hundred square feet. And the lot size is smaller than this lot is, that lot is like nine thousand square feet. So their four hour ratio is thirty seven percent. Our is like twenty seven percent. Uh four hour ratio uh on a bigger lot. Um. And the footprint of this house is pretty much, okay, um. Um sitting on the existing footprint, of course, is will be a little bigger. Um. And the setbacks, we're meeting all the setbacks. Um. They on the north side, we're meeting the ten percent, but then on the south side, okay, because we understand the south side is a little lower than us. So we want to keep more distance. From the south side, so on the south side, on the first full setback, we have thirteen feet, pretty much like twenty percent. Of the minimum requirement. Uh I'm sorry, they did twenty percent. Because the minimum requirement is ten percent, so we're almost like doubling the minimum setback to the south side. And on top of that. Uh we're keeping all the maturity on this property because we're building on the almost the same footprint. So we are, we're able to keeping all this maturity along all property lines, especially uh the sideways trees. The row of sideways tree on the south side. Um. That's separating the south property and and the subject property. And on the second floor. When we design this, we understand, okay, the massing and bulk are very important. So the second floor, when we distribute the four, the four area, the second floor is like around twelve hundred square feet. And the first floor is. If you add everything together, it's like around twenty seven, twenty eight hundred square feet. So this first, the second floor to first floor ratio is like pretty much less than twenty, uh less than fifty percent. It's much smaller than the first floor, so the first floor, the massing of the first floor will help this visually anchor the house. To the ground. And when you look at A two. Um the second floor plan, you can see a lot of first floor roof around this second floor plan. And when you further look at the. The roof plan, you can see uh so much articulation we have provided for this house. To cut down the massing, the bulk. Uh that's not a a rectangular. Uh obsee house that only, only takes care of the functionality of the home. Um. Uh we are trying our best to do a balance of functionality and aesthetics. Uh when you look at the group plan, you can see they're varying road lines from all directions. With mimicking the mountain behind. Um. And. And at the same time, okay. This will help, okay, upgrade this property. Uh the common wall between the north property and the south and the subject property is almost falling. We are proposing to build a new concrete block wall. Um the owner will pay for it. Um to replace the the existing default uh wood banks. Um. So. Yeah, sorry, really quick, yeah, which properties was that between? Uh between, uh we're between one sixty four and one eighty four. But which was the wall between? Oh, uh between the north. The north, so. Yeah, one, the one sixty four. Okay, then sorry. Yeah, and and they are a little higher than us. Okay, and because we are the two story house, we are a little higher than the south side, so we set back further from the south side. And keeping the cypress for that. Yeah, yeah, okay. And also the window on the second story. Uh pretty much, okay, we have all the smaller window facing the south, you are facing the north side and the south side. Uh there's only one bedroom, the facing the south side has a little taller window. But those can be modified if that's really come into the issue. Yeah, um so. We have no problem with the conditions of group approval and I'm here to answer any question you may have and um. Yes. I'm sorry, my computer. Oh, uh I. You mean from my computer? Oh, no, we haven't. We have a tutor. Oh, yeah. Go ahead. Okay. Oh, uh I'm sorry, okay, for this rendering, okay, this is a older rendering, okay, that we outsourced, okay, uh that. To to a consultant. Um a couple days ago, okay, we found that there is some inconsistency of this because. Um. This was done earlier this year and and. Right before we submit the plan and we took the advice from staff, we have um so many year. Wrapping around from the front garage, the two portals. To the south side, all the way to the interior wall finish. So you will see a lot more stone manier, okay? Uh actually, okay, the entire garage will be covered by stone manier. Uh which is a a typical feature of Prairie style homes. Um. Yeah, this is the front and and we're keeping the cedar tree in the front and the great myrtle on the su- on the south side. Um if you look at the. The tree survey, okay, uh you can see we are keeping all the existing mature tree. We're not chopping off even one. Yeah.
Just wanted to point out really quick that the original street view rendering we received. Uh we noted that that building was a lot more forward placed than would actually be. Instructed, so we asked for this updated rendering. That actually has a more accurate placement of the building.
So we are in line with our north and south neighbor.
And I'm happy to answer any question you may have. Any questions?
I have just a very minor question, um and it's more of personal interest, um. I've noted in the floor plan that there's a pantry that opens out into a living room instead of the kitchen. And that just seemed a little odd to me if I were a homeowner, having a dozen little living room get to the pantry door, so I was curious whether. What that choice was about, whether the family wanted it or not.
That is a a keep a big a a trail there because, okay, you see behind the pantry. Um because there are several different elements we want to fit in there, okay, a a small wet bar. Uh a um. A a display cabinet in the dining room, so um. We understand there is no perfect plan, okay? Um and and that walk-in pantry, we call it walk-in pantry, that that's also served as a closet. On one side, the other side is storage. So um. So consider all the factors, so we came up with this, okay, location. Yeah.
The 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 family whoever designed it really wants that wet bar. The pantry and the kitchen.
That that's a good suggestion, okay, but um I. There there was some, okay, discussion with uh with the homeowner. That somehow we end up, okay, like this, but these are easy fix, okay? What now tonight, okay, you mentioned about this, we can go back and talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I was honestly, I don't care whatever the homeowner wants, but I was just curious to hear.
I understand, yeah, yeah.
To me, it seems kind of, I mean, that was, that was my very minor question, I might have more questions, that's people.
Any other question? No, no question, no, thank you, thank you. So, um. Anybody who can help us with this, I'm looking to speed up the project. I'm on the home.
Oh.
Do you want this blue card or? No, I mean, it's beautiful, yeah, I can tell that. It was the first time I've uh I've started to mirror the general. My name's Kurt Island, where I live at three oh three Mandamita, which above the back of this property. Uh more specifically, my backyard uh is on that, my I I mean. I have six homes that that above my property on all sides, this one is. Um I came up here more as curiosity and then when I saw the renderings of the house and with all due respect to the previous uh speaker. There is no house in that neighborhood that looks like that, that looks like a tract home amongst homes in that area that. You know, early century, mid-century homes. And it would stick out like a sore thumb. So I asked you that you could consider that. And I have a question as to why it needs to be two stories and not just one story. That fits in with the architecture, there's very few. Uh two story homes in that area, I'm concerned about the privacy because people overlook my, I'm retired and I spend a lot of time on my backyard. But it it's two story homes that was built around the corner of um. Manzamita in Lima, that sticks out like a sore thumb, but it's ugly, it doesn't mention anything that's there. So I just wish you would consider and ask the question as to why it has to be a two story home. Why it can't be a one story, I think there's plenty of uh of land there to put a three, three thousand, thirty five hundred square foot house on that. And the architecture, there's nothing in that area that looks like that. We are craftsmen, the old ranch style homes, and so please consider that when you when you uh consider approving this. Thank you very much. And I walk around, they'll give it thirty years, I walked around that neighborhood for thirty years, my dog and everything, and there's nothing that looks like that. If you want to go down that road and start changing the architecture in that area, be very disappointed if the people have been there for thirty years. Thank you. Anyone else? On the bell.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Karma Bell, I'm the house on the south side, one at one eighty four South Lima. Um so we are directly. Related to our uh neighbors to the north. Uh my husband and I have been in that house since nineteen eighty eight. Um living immediately south of the proposed project, I have issues with the project as proposed. Um. And I I should ask, did I I dropped off uh some pack of packet for each of you this afternoon, okay? Good, so you have some reference. Um. My immediate neighbors to the south, one ninety four, South Lima, and neighbors to the east, uh where Kurt lives, three oh three Mandamita. With whom we share backyards, each added to their properties without resorting to two stories. They kept their expansions consistent with the immediate neighborhood. I contend that the two story house at one seventy four is not consistent with the immediate neighborhood. The proposal will not look like. Like it's always been there, like Mr. Dahl said, this house, previous project that they were talking about, this house looks like it has always been there. This proposed at one seventy four will not look anything like it was always there, it will look completely different. Um as far as privacy, I've attached a photo of how a high, how high a second story would bloom over our backyard, should you approve this project as is. The balloon, you could barely see it in the picture, um indicates how high the second story would dominate over our outdoor activities. The photo was taken from the highest point in my backyard, it measured, it measured twenty four feet. From the surface of my driveway to the base of the three balloons in the photo. With a light wind blowing, so it wasn't completely straight up. Uh the three orange balloons show the significant impact the proposed twenty four foot high two story house would have, would be on. In my privacy. Um. I appreciate what they want to do, I I it it looks very nice, but it doesn't fit in the prop, in this street. Uh in the block between Ramona and Mandamita, uh the architecture said there were three houses that were two story. Well, one is like um. A second story over the garage and that's about it. Uh the other one is an um historic house on the corner, the two story. Lodge, I don't remember the name of the lodge. And the third at one ninety five presents as a one story to the facing the street of Lima. And their second story is on Mandamita, so it. Doesn't affect. Uh our properties on Loyman. Um it fits in. This house would be completely out of whack with this particular block, even if there are three other two story homes. This one does not look anything like. What the others look like, it's twice as big, so it's going to stick out. By the sore thumb. Um all the surrounding properties are fifteen hundred square feet, thirteen hundred, seventeen hundred. Uh but not three thousand and certainly not second story. So that's, that's my, my piece, a- and because of your appeal process thing, the way. You phrase it on the notice. Uh I wanted to bring to the attention uh the um. Concrete block wall that uh is between our two properties, that's the second photo that I provided you. I hung a, we hung a phone line. To demonstrate that there's a seven and a half degree lean angle, the the concrete block wall is leaning. Seven and a half degrees. About four and a half inch difference between the top and the bottom of the wall. And um that should be addressed at the time that the owners do sit, but I just wanted to get that on the record that that. Should be addressed. On this property, thank you.
And.
Yeah.
Um my name is Janet Owens and I own the property at one seventy five South Lima, directly across the street. I was actually surprised that the owner and the developer did not approach the neighbors prior to this step, which is a tradition, I thought. I was actually surprised that the owner and the developer did not approach the neighbors prior to this step, which is a tradition, I thought, rather. I've had that happen before in the past, to get a meeting with us, to get our input, suggestions and concerns. I am opposed to anyone building a two-story home there. It will not be in keeping with the look of the neighborhood. It is certainly possible to build a massive home on that lot and not have to resort to a two-story structure. As an example, I found the home at eleven forty-five Sano Court in Arcadia. The home has four bedrooms and five bathrooms in four thousand six hundred and fifty square feet. With a two-car garage, single storey. Zillow estimates the home value at more than three million dollars, it sold in two seventeen for two million six hundred and eighty thousand. It was built in two six, twenty sixteen on a twelve thousand square foot lot. The lot is one thousand square foot larger than one seventy-four South Lima. But the home is also one thousand square foot larger than the proposed home. A lot at one seventy-four South Lima can easily be built as a one-story and still accommodate a large home. Please consider those of us who will live here beyond when the owner and developer will have sold and moved on. This is an obvious spec home, and the neighbor's concerns should be taken into account. As Karma said, she's lived there for many years, I've owned my house since nineteen fifty-six. And I I I don't want to walk out my front door and see that, because it's directly across the street from my home. Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, opposed to the public request, maybe twenty-five to the commission? Any other, any questions to staff? Maybe we should just, anybody have any discussion to? Run by the property?
I drove by and went like that.
I grabbed up the smaller, so I never sort of have. All right, um. Who wants to see that?
Um, yeah, I I live in a two-story home myself, and I've always preferred two stories to one story, I grew up in Ohio. Um, so even the concept of a one-story is kind of exotic to me. Um, it's fantastic to hear from the neighbors and just. How much it seems like one story as opposed to me is the norm in in that neighborhood, so thank you all for sharing. Sharing that, um, I'll be curious to hear more about um whether there are specific things uh. In regard to the code and the plan um that we are dealt to. I also, I I think I was the understanding that this wall the owner was going to replace. Is that the same wall?
I I can clarify that, that is the wall on the south end, and that is not proposed for.
Okay, got it. Um, so that that addressing that would be of a concern to me as well, and I'm not sure. Who is responsible for addressing that, that should be the owner, um, because like it is due for maintenance. Um, this would be my comments, I'm curious to hear from some other books.
I'll go that way. Um. So. You have guidelines to power development, so that our residential. And provide options, right? And you're allowed to, on your own property, decide how you want to envision or buy by the. By the guidelines that we provided. Whether you want it following one story or if you do a two-story, of course. We feel like there are more sensitive issues with the two-story, and therefore we bring it here so we can discuss. Um, we have guidelines that dictate um setbacks. Um, square footage allow both depending on the lot that you have. We have guidelines that that require that uh the plane uh when we have a setback is actually. Different on the first floor than it is on the second floor, so there's a natural stepping that needs to occur that we mandate. Um. With all those guidelines being there. A property owner that wants to develop a house for themselves or their parents, whoever it might be. If they follow those guidelines and utilize the quality materials, and we do that for every house that we're putting on there. Um, I feel like those are the things that we. Uh jurisdictional, which would be able to suggest and make changes to. Um, and I I totally get it, I mean, as neighbors, I I appreciate you guys taking the time to come out here. And to voice your opinion and all that, uh, but these are the things that we're bound by to. To uh, to I guess criticize or change or to revise as we go forward. And this house, whether you like the style or not, it meets those requirements that we've been setting, and we've been reviewing all these projects for them. Um, we're sensitive to the fact that it's within the footprint that's there. They've been sensitive that on the south side, because they're sitting a little bit higher than the other house, they've actually increased their sites of that. From the required six feet or so to thirteen feet or whatever it was. Um, compared to the north side, because the old that house is sitting a little bit higher, therefore they they will want the minimum. Um, if you look at the difference between the square footage of the first floor and the second floor. They've really stepped it back on all sides, right? Um, and so I think, okay, the style of the house. Maybe it's not my preferences, but it is their preference, and it's gonna be their house. I think it it needs to require the quality materials, articulation of uh, you know, the stone in the. Rod setting, those kinds of things. And so I think based on all those things that we are usually judging this this house on, I think it meets all of those and. Um, they're taking steps to remedy a lot of the things that would usually come up as issue, so.
Yeah, um, sorry, thanks for saying what I was about to say. Um, sorry, no, that's all right, I it's 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 what I can, that's that's how I feel, um. You know, I I love that the neighbors are concerned over this change in their neighborhood. Um, on a hyper-local area, if you're looking at, you know, it's it's, you know, from. I've lived in this town all my life, from Ramona to Manzamita, this was my paper route when I was a kid, I've seen those houses a lot of times. Um, you know, on that little block, you know, there is a lot of that's that ranch style that looks fifties. Um, that has been there for a long time. Um, I own a house that is a lot like that myself, um. It's different than the things that are there, if you if you extend your. Where you're looking a little bit, I drove the, I drove all the blocks around there today. Uh, you you know, you got that one, that above, I think it's a couple apartments or something that's of a, on that block, a couple more. You've got that big boxy apartment building that's up just above Ramona, like maybe three doors up there. Um, yeah, I think if you look at the the neighborhood in general, um. With all of this, there are some two-story houses, it's not like it's the only one. Um, and again, it meets, it meets all the design review that I have. In front of me, it meets the general pan plan, it meets the zoning code. Um, I don't think that, I think they've taken a lot of steps, like like uh, commissioner, you mentioned that they. They did step the 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 south side back to thirteen feet, um, so it's moving just over, I think, seven feet from the original, what it is today. That, I think that will help. Um, I think, you know, again, the the windows along the sides, you aren't gonna be really looking into the houses. It's not like there's this big balcony kind of looming over your house. Um, you know, living on the side of the hill, we have that problem where where, you know, the house above you is above you. Um, you know, that's that's, that's part of Sierra Madre. Um. I think that they've built, they've designed this house to our codes. Um. And that it it in in large, it will fit into the neighborhood. Um, it may be a little bit different in the. The style, uh, but you know, Sierra Madre is is a hodgepodge of styles. There's a lot of different styles uh around the city. Um, so I think, I think they've tried to make as many concessions, the one thing I I do agree with. Uh, if we're gonna build a whole new house, um, I I think. Again, I defer this, but um, if we're gonna build it on a a lot, and we've got a wall, retaining wall that's holding that lot up. Um, I believe the people that uh the wall would be part of this property, is that correct? It it just makes sense, and since we're trying to hold this property where it's at, and going onto the southern property. That this retaining wall would be the part of of this lot. Um. I think it'd be nice, or it could be on the other property.
Yeah, wherever it is.
I don't know, um, I don't know, if it's part of this property one, maybe that's something we look at. Or something that's investigated, I'm not sure honestly of the. Legalities or the ownership of this wall, but I it would, you know, it's, we're gonna be moving a lot of root and earth and moving, you know, stuff. Um, it's not gonna make that lower retaining wall any stronger, um, so maybe it's just something we look at. Uh, they they said they would do the the northern wall. Um, I don't know if it's something.
The commissioner, so a survey has to be done in order to determine the location of the block wall.
Okay, okay, I, if if we could maybe amend this to to include a survey be done. Um, to determine if that is, that that retaining wall is the responsibility of of this home. Um, yeah, not, I'm not sure.
The grading and drainage plan was the civil drawing, there is a new five-foot wall. Being proposed for a portion of that.
Um.
For a portion of that. Yeah, from here to here.
That would basically replace that.
I I don't know, I don't know if it's replacing that one, but it's, there is a five-foot concrete retaining wall. Concrete block retaining wall being proposed, so maybe take a closer look at that.
Yeah, just so that we can basically state that this lot is gonna stay where it's at. And not go over to the south one, um, whatever we can do that way. Um, I'd like to amend.
Based on the survey that was submitted for this project, um, what I can tell is that the wall in question. Straddles the property line, and it could be straddling due to leaning. So that calls into question who owns that, who actually does own this, uh, or who is willing to take responsibility.
Right. Um.
And you can include that in the conditions of approval.
Yeah, they're willing to rebuild the wall. Make whatever condition you want, so if they're satisfied, they don't have to do it.
No, if that's what I was meaning, it would be negative condition that this lot has to be stable. I don't think that wall is, I mean, has that stable, that the applicant agreed, or he'll pay to rebuild the wall.
What would want to imply the applicant?
That's his wall. Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't think we have to ask him if he wanted that.
Um, first of all, thank you for the neighbor's input. Um, and for this wall, okay, um. It's looked like it is a shared wall, okay, it's on the property line, we have no problem to discuss with the neighbor to take, how to take care of this wall. Yeah.
I guess what we're saying is, if we made it a condition, since it's on the property line, we can agree and replace it fully. And we owe the, your responsibility, or your, rather than.
I I don't think there's a problem for the owner, okay, because, okay, um. Uh, the goal is to improve this property, okay, not only the house, but. Uh, the landscaping, the wall, like, the north wall, we're really prepared to replace it on our own cost. Yeah.
Right, we're just asking.
Yeah, okay, that's no problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, so yeah, but. We can make that a condition. Right, okay. So here we have a conundrum, I I sit, I I literally sit on the other side of the fence. I have two things where I I don't disagree with. The public input that the mass and scale and setting of the project is not consistent with the neighborhood. I agree, there's a couple of two-stories, the Brantley House, Alson Vina. It's really small, it's two-story, but and the rest of it is this eclectic collection of one-stories. Um, I would rather see no one-story on this property, and I and I think it meets criteria number three to. To have them modify um the two-story, in spite of them making all the efforts to compact it and pick that second story up. And percentage-wise, it'd be less than capital being distinct, it just doesn't, it to me doesn't fit, because it also. Um, number four proposed project reflects the scale of the neighborhood image is is proposed, I think in this case, we done. Um, I mean, for better or for worse, the neighbors have lived there forever, so they haven't changed their homes, and I think that. That characterizes the character of the neighborhood, and I think the spirit of the neighborhood is one, a one-story homes, so. I would, I pants support the project, it's a two-story, the most too innovative, I would encourage the uh builders to re-remodel, design it. Um, but. It's up to them, and someone has to make a motion, that's on this, I can't. I closed a couple of comments, I'm sorry, I can't. Is there any further discussion, anybody?
Yes, I would note that I I've joined kind of Sierra Madre politics to represent maybe the next generation coming through and owning the next generation's homes, et cetera. So I agree, the neighbors have been there forever, I also can note they will not be there forever, and so we. Will have a next generation of folks moving into these homes and maybe not wanting um ranch homes forever. Um, so I don't necessarily think that that logic extends for all time, I can see that it could extend to this home. But at some point, we might want to say, okay, you know, we have a new generation of folks living in these homes, and maybe they want them to look slightly different. Or their needs that are not the needs of the nineteen fifty's.
Okay, I I just think since the since the place is neighborhood is that way. Yeah, as you say, people would want it, and that they would live that way for the next twenty years.
I agree, like, I I I got a mid-century home, and I decorated it in mid-century, you know, decoration, that sort of thing, so I I do agree, there could be people who. Move there specifically for that characteristic. That's why I I say, like, I feel like your logic doesn't extend for the next thirty years, but it might extend for this.
It's something, it's something you guys have to. Say so and make the motion.
That's true, I have a question for you regarding underground utilities, so it's not a part of the um conditions of approval in our. That meant that.
Oh.
Would you like to add that?
All right, yeah, if if there's motion to be included, then, well, the likes, I'm sure, and if that's reasonable, and all that, so that's. Yeah, I don't know. Talking about when you're powerful down, where they have the ground, from where are the existing powers, instead of having it straight across and goes down.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think that's normal, right? We faced that before.
So what's the other sort of, like, a motion?
Well, I'm not actually, I mean, that's, we're getting late now, but I was curious to maybe hear from. Uh, or actually here, whether they would consider a one-story, maybe after all this, they're like, yeah, let's consider a one-story.
That's a good question, and I do have a question for staff, is is neighborhood, you find. And. So there's, I think there's maybe a, I just want to make sure that it is that I know the definition.
In a curable value, what do you know?
Right.
Uh, but we we use the term neighborhood in the neighborhood analysis, so we can think of neighborhood in this context as uh every property within within a three-hundred-foot radius.
Okay, so that would be that sheet that we have, that we're comparing it to, by the the size. Correct, we have, we have everything but stories, I think, in there.
Correct, some some analyses do include stories, but I did not ask for that data point in this analysis. Can I ask what? It's not a typical request.
Well, can I talk to, come on, stack up, are you a a person one-story? Um, like, um, the co-sess, okay, um. Yes, you're almost right to do a single-story house or two-story house, okay, for their preference. Uh, for what they like, some people like the single-story house, some people like the two-story house for. Privacy issues, okay, for their own, okay, breeze, uh lighting here on the second story, um, and. For this particular family, okay, they really like.
for this particular family, okay, they really like a two-story house that they can get more junk space uh for their family uh together, um for their kids, especially the kids, okay, then, who wanna run around their special needs. Um. So uh that's why we, we, we're keeping the sixty-five-foot three setback, which is a large setback from the rear property. And um and consider the second story on facing the rear, it's about seventy-five feet from the rear property line. Um and we're keeping all those mature trees in the back. And so we, we have considered the pros and cons, okay, whether a single story or a two-story. Um so, so that from the beginning, uh they set on a two-story house, which would uh suitable for the family. So we'll, we'll, we'll go for two-story house.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's all just videos from that. Thank you, thank you.
Alright.
Someone wants to propose a motion, propose in the head.
Uh I think that was a motion for the group designing with number twenty-two or three. Um as presented.
Uh underground in the power. I don't agree. And, oh, which is with.
Southern, down in the power, from the power, from the, and the south wall. Oh, sorry, and the south wall. Okay, as a view of my.
Okay, seconded.
Seconded, uh goes in favor?
Aye.
Two goes against? Oh. Conundrum, we have a chance. Yeah, we have a conundrum. I, I, I would like to find out if we're gonna define, basically, we're gonna define neighborhood as a three-hundred square foot radius, and that's what I, I think that's a pretty good thing. There's such a, it's such a what's our neighborhood? Sierra Madre is the neighborhood to me almost. Um you know, and I, I did mention this hyper-local neighborhood, or if you go out a couple of blocks. And I would like to see that sheet with one- and two-story buildings. Um maybe drive it again and. But we have a two, too, so it's all events next time to, I suppose, but what, so what can you do? We just have a detail list of the next, since it's a meeting.
We can um accept the we can continue the, the, the project to the next.
Yeah, then we have to, we need, we need a, we need a majority vote or something. Where, okay. Um then I direct staff them to give me what their information. Can we communicate offline so I can verify before that information? Period. Alright, so we're at, it didn't pass this still, right? So we'll bring it. When you just set this for a date, certain then, or it'll just assign it to the next meeting.
So I would ask the applicant to prepare an amended neighborhood analysis to include the data points. Uh what I hear so far is uh which homes in that neighborhood are single and double-story?
Correct. Any homes, it's gonna be that, that list that we have that, you know, that's already made, it has a lot's square footage and it has the, like, right now, right now, has a lot's square footage and has the uh the address and the uh home square footage, if we can have that included more than two-story homes.
Could we as well have the square footage of the second story being included if we have that data, but I know a lot of the points that we're bringing up was even if it was a two-story home, it was it's much smaller. So I'd be curious if that's possible, if it is possible to be included.
Data available to the public that already includes accessible areas, so if that doesn't mean in fact include uh areas like Barra or.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Yes, especially.
Yeah. Uh that's what I'm on his back, but if we have the data.
Alright, Josh.
We probably know to uh continue to convene certain of September twenty-one.
We're being, we're waiting, yeah.
Can I invite the applicant up to the board?
I'm sorry, I cannot make it on September twenty-one because I will have my surgery in October. Um and I will have a, a kind of a invitation to my wife, okay, before the surgery, because after the surgery, I won't be mobile for, I don't know how long. Um so when is the next uh hearing stage after September first, twenty-first?
It will be October fifth. And then the following meeting is October nineteenth.
I, I think October fifth will, I can do it.
Or is the possible to do I guess, September twenty-one?
September twenty-one, I'll be at this time.
Yeah, yeah.
You want this? Yeah.
Sure, we'll, we'll just maybe do a day.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, yeah.
Just on the practical wording of the motion, it would be, I move a substitute motion to continue.
Oh, yes, I, I did, you know, and since the vote was, I think, we're gonna have to make a substitute motion to uh leave this, I would do on the mini, I'll tell you that. I move a second. Second. All in favor? Alright. Thank you. Alright. Thank you, everyone. That finishes to the. Thank you guys for your consideration. Okay, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. I know who owns that wall, by the way. I knew the original owner, she built it, not her problem. I'll, I'll find the paper.
Oh, which one built? Okay, uh I think you find it, it should be placed. I'm not supposed to say anybody won't, maybe you did. No. October seventh, uh okay. Alright, very good.
Um at our next meeting, September twenty-first, we'll have, we'll be performing one for a second-story addition and a remodel.
That's it. With the solar. Uh huh. So I then will adjourn the meeting to you. Set to any point first? Thank you. Thank you.
Looks an interesting property.
Yeah, you got, yeah, you got the industrial. You know. Go on. Moving. Yes.